Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome and thank you for joining us for tonight's meeting of the Arinda City Council. Today is Tuesday, April fifteenth, 2025, Tax Day for anyone who's paying attention. And this is our 7:00 PM regular meeting. Please do be advised for anyone who needs them that there are assisted listening devices. They are right there at the back of the room. And if we could have a roll call. Councilmember G. Here. Councilmember Hoxey.
Here. Councilmember Riley. Here. Vice Mayor Iverson. Here. And Mayor Malkani. Here. Thank you.
And now I'd like everyone to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the proposed agenda?
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, there are no changes proposed.
Okay, then do I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that passes unanimously. And next, we have items for the good of the city. And we have a our annual report from the police department from our police chief, the city manager.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Chief Rossi is going to give you this annual update. And it's his first one as chief of police. There you go.
Good evening, councilmembers, vice mayor, mayor. It's good to see you guys now as the chief and not just the sergeant. I'm gonna give this a little brief about the state of how things are and things that are going on. I want you all to note that I also created this PowerPoint, so I'm very proud of it. I think I would get an A if I was still in school, so I'm really proud for everybody here as well. Here's a most recent photograph of the officers that we currently have. Two of them have moved on. I have some new ones coming in or that are already here and will be updating this soon. So our staffing right now, as myself, we're right now looking for a new senior administrative assistant. I have two sergeants, one admin, one investigation, a detective, traffic officer, and eight patrol officers, including a reserve officer. Our new officers are Officer Mason Grossman, who works graveyard, and then Officer Jordan Baker, who she works day shift. So these are some highlighted new laws for 2025. Not going to go too much into them other than the PC 666.1. This addresses the repeat offenders of our petty theft or shoplifting. If they've had any prior convictions, it doesn't have to be just in petty theft. If they have, there's a litany of prior convictions that they have, it turns that misdemeanor into a felony. So the city already has had, I think to note, eight arrests that fall within that, all with successful filings with the district attorney's office. So we're putting this law into effect as we speak. We have some new police vehicles that are gonna be coming. Our fleet is a little old, so this is as close as I could find of what our new police vehicle will look like. It is gonna be a Dodge Durango. It'll be white in color with our normal Arinda badging on it. Part of our community outreach, so I know I had a lot of help from city council on this. Our toy drive was phenomenal. And it's gonna be even probably bigger this next year where I'm gonna have to rent a truck to take all the toys. But this was a nice little photo op of the officers after one of their pickups and filling up the back of the patrol car, not with bad guys, but toys. So that was nice. We had our national ride out last year, successful. We seem to be the only one in the county that gets a dunk tank. So we're gonna make sure that we have it again, so that people can bring things like backpacks to the community for, you know, helping out schools. And they get a toss to try to dunk me in the tank. I've been dunked before. It's fun, especially if my kids are up there. They seem to hit it every time. We're also doing our normal school safety and our recess with the elementary schools. That's this week. So this morning, we were at Sleepy Hollow, spent a morning with them. Kindergartners love stickers. First through fifth, they really like autographs. So I wrote Chief Rossi on clothing, shoes, arms, hands, a lot of places. So I apologize to the public if they're washing their kids right now with Chief Rossi somewhere written on them. These are our scheduled events for 2025. Fourth of July parade, national night out, we're doing coffee with the cops. The trunk or treat went over really well last year, so we'll be back involved with that. We just got done with Touch a Truck. We had a large group including kids talking on the microphone and all those fun things. So a bunch of other things, including the toy drive, and then hanging out with the kids at OIS and at Mayor Money High. So our neighborhood watch for the community is Officer Johnson. So if they want to set up or they want to do any meetings, the phone number is set up there for anyone to call in to get that handled. This is gonna be a little bit of educational. So all officers and all our vehicles are outfitted with body worn cameras and vehicle cameras. There's just some views of what it kind of looks like from the interior of the, on the computer inside the police officer's vehicle, shows a front, zoomed in, afar away, and then an area where those that we transport are seated. Officers can't be everywhere at once, so if you see something, please call us. I think that's a nice thing that we don't have a lot of crime here. I'll take no credit for that. That's the officers and how they go about being proactive out in the streets. But we do have a lot of people that aren't sure. Like, they saw something, they don't want to do anything, or they're not, they don't want to bother us. You're not bothering us. We want the phone call. We want to be out there. So if we can't be there to see something, it's better for the public to call us. It's not any hassle. And the officers are more than wanting to be involved with the community in regards to that. Some of the other things we do, we do the safe firearm storage. We offer free gun locks. We'll take possession of any unwanted firearms or ammunition from the residents. They just please call us prior to coming. We don't want you just to show up to City Hall with a firearm and go, hey, can you guys help me with this? You won't get the same result. So our property crimes, this is kind of a bar graph since 2020 up to 2024, in a couple highlighted area, our residential burglaries, our commercial burglaries, and our auto burglaries. As you can see, we're on a good trend due to our proactivity. We're starting to really go down. So I want to get that as down to zero. I know I live in the real world, so we'll do our best. But I think that those numbers for the entire year, those are very respectable numbers for a small community like we have. Due to our stolen vehicles and our recovery of stolen vehicles, again, the trend is showing a downward grade. Obviously, COVID messed everything up. And then we had a rise, and now we're back into a natural fall due to our proactivity. That kind of lets you know with that limited staff that our officers are out there being proactive and keeping the streets safe. Our arrest totals from 2020, obviously COVID again, then we kind of started getting out of COVID. Then we had our huge rise in 2022, 2023, and 24. We're kind of on that same pace again. This is not a result of crimes that are committed in the city. So this is our officers contacting people, whether it be warrants, drug possession, some shoplifting, things of that nature. People are being contacted and arrested. So the stat looks good for me that we're being very proactive, but it's not a reflection that we live in a dangerous city. Our officers are out there preventing those other stats you saw from increasing. So they're contacting people before they have the opportunity to get into crime. I put in our average response time. So sometimes we have heard that, like, you know, once I call dispatch, how long does it take a police officer? This shows that between calling 911 and our officers getting the call and arriving to the location, they're anywhere from four and a half minutes to five and a half minutes, which I think, again, with traffic, how spread out we are, all the tight roads, our officers are very fast for response. So I think that this also coupled with how our officers are proactive should make the community feel safe that within four and a half to five minutes, you're gonna have officers at your residence. And this is an average. This, we have times that are faster than that, obviously, based on location. LPR systems. So this is kind of like an overview. The city does have LPR systems right now, and we're looking to increase that. And it kind of shows you what it is. It doesn't capture people. It's only focused on the vehicle and the license plate itself. This is kind of like a simple version, which I like, what it's for and what it's not. So it's officer safety. It's investigative tool, helps identify stolen vehicles, wanted vehicles, helps locate suspects of criminal investigation or arrest warrants, and helps us find missing persons. I know that sounds weird with a license plate camera, but we've had incidents where I haven't seen grandma. She left. She left in her car. We can use that to kind of start pinpointing where that car was last seen to start setting up where we need to look. Well, what they don't do, obviously, it's not replacement for police work, doesn't replace good neighbors, doesn't help prevent crime necessarily. It does not provide anything to DOJ. There's no live feed system currently with this system. And it doesn't contain any personal identifying information. So even though it's taking a photograph of the vehicle and the plate, it's a DOJ system that law enforcement only has access to, to then run the plate and do those things. That's basically it. Is there any questions?
Sure, there are. Who wants to start? Anyway, okay.
You mentioned the 911 arrival time being between four and five minutes, but it was only about a year ago, we got a letter from somebody about very long wait times. And I had had one where I had a roadside incident, not in Arinda. And it was, they never did answer. Do we have different dispatches? Like, is it that good everywhere and it's just gotten better? Or does Arinda have different channels? How does, how does that logistically work?
So the only issue that we have is because of our location, we have multiple cell towers. So if you're calling from a cell phone, and it could act, it could go to the tower on top of the tunnel, and then it's getting bounced around. So it takes a minute for that aspect. That's what would increase the time. So we've had people say, hey, I've been on hold, or I've called, I haven't gotten anything. Or when they call 911, because it hits a tower, it sometimes will get routed to CHP. CHP then has to redirect it back to the sheriff's office. So then your time starts to increase because CHP has limited dispatch, just like the sheriff's office does. So you start having a longer period of time before you can actually tell somebody what you need. But that's, they're trying to fix that with new cell towers and how they're going about it. But that's not a result of you wanting help and like the PD just not showing up. It's part of our dispatch system.
The complaint that we had gotten was that 911 wasn't picking up because they were short staffed. And so I was just curious if that was something you were aware of.
So they are very short staffed right now. They're working at 30% of where they need to be. Law enforcement as a whole is, is dealing with that right now. They're fully, they're staffed to be able to handle 911 calls, and they're hiring, they have hired a lot of dispatchers. Their sole responsibility is just to answer the 911 call. So then they route you to an actual dispatcher that speaks with the officer. So we kind of have a two layered type of system. We also have, last year, they started where you basically, if it's non emergency or you're looking for certain information, it's kind of like a phone tree, where you press one if you need this, press two if this, but if you press zero, you go immediately to a dispatcher.
Thank you. And then my only other question is, I, the rumor that's been going around ever since the pandemic is that a lot of crime that happens in Arinda is coming from Oakland or from bigger cities, San Francisco, Berkeley, you know, the sort of more urbanized areas. It's not coming from La Mirinda or even Contra Costa County. How much of that do you feel is factually accurate? And is there anything you can do about that?
I don't have the statistic that would say, like, where do you live? Why did you come here to do crime? Or why you were found here and we, we got you? I don't have a way to correlate that. All that we can do is basically stay very visible and proactive so that we turn our community and not to a place where people want to come here to, to do the shoplift or to commit crime. And the word of mouth along the criminal element is, our city, they, is, we don't mess around in Arinda because they don't have any tolerance. So we basically, if you come to town and you're up to no good, you get caught, and we take care of that. Yeah, I try.
Other questions? Yeah, Councilmember Riley.
Does, does the average response time also include a phone call from a security company when, when the alarm's been tripped?
That still goes through our dispatch. So yeah, it's a collective. Anything, that, that number is based on when the dispatch center receives that call, whether it's your ADT or whatever, sending in a message or calling to the sheriff's dispatch, and then it's sending it to the officer.
That's included, is all.
That's included.
Okay, yeah. Okay, good. Can you explain to me how the cameras help with evacuation preparedness? The new cameras, it says.
Oh, the new cameras? Okay, so.
It says additional cameras will have the ability to assist in our evacuation preparedness. So I'm just wondering how they assist.
Yeah, so what we're working on is an LPR camera, license plate reading camera, that basically is a live feed. Instead of just taking singular photos, it's a live feed so we can watch intersections. So if we have a intersection, let's just say for E's Minor and Camino Pablo, and we're able to monitor that to just to see normal flow of traffic. In an emergency preparedness, we can see, hey, we have a backup. Something's going on in that area, whether it's an accident that hasn't been called in to, due to the emergency that's already going on, or there's something else. It would help us be able to dispatch an officer in house. We could be able to see that from inside the PD, not have to deal with dispatch, and be able to go and effectively handle that. So it'd allow us to make sure that evacuation routes are being followed, the contra flow is, is working, and it'd just allow us to monitor that and be able to improve it if we need to. Like, hey, I need to actually put an officer there or someone there to man that intersection to continue the flow to make it safer.
So the new ones will be able to take a picture of the license plate as well as?
Yes. And that'll be in specific areas. That's why I didn't say that all of them. There'll be specific areas that are part of our evacuation preparedness. So that way we can monitor those for the safety of the public when it's, if we never have to do that evacuation.
There are a couple numbers of, on this slide about how many cameras there are. And then later tonight, we're gonna be talking about the number of cameras. And here on your slides, it says approximately. So do you have a more current number? Or is this as good as?
Yeah, I have a hard number of nine right now.
Hard number of nine for stationary mobile cameras?
That's correct.
Okay. And then it says several privately owned cameras scattered throughout the city, approximately 11.
Correct.
That's a solid number?
Yes, that is a solid number.
Thank you. That's all.
Councilmember G.
Chief, thank you. What, in the past, one of the things that was often a problem, and a lot of your predecessors had concerns about how resources were getting, you know, sort of derailed by false alarm systems. And you didn't mention that. So is that, is that a problem still? Are there a lot of false alarms that take time away from other things for your staff?
No, not really. They, they get their normal, we, our typical flow for alarm calls are when people are going to work and they set it and it goes off, or when they're coming home and they forget to hit the button, and we get those. So a lot of those alarms, they get dispatched to us. We're en route, and before we even get there, it gets canceled. So that has not been in my tenure here, even as a sergeant, that's kind of been decreasing. If we have, we have other avenues when it's a chronic, then we can, basically, we have some ordinances that allow us to charge those individuals for chronic. But I haven't had to use that, and neither did my predecessor. So not a problem.
Great. Yes.
I just wanted to ask you about the Hilton House smash and grab, because I think the community has had a lot of concern about that. And just wondering if you have heightened awareness now to that sort of crime, or if there's any measures that we can take as a community to prevent that sort of crime in the future?
Awareness, we're always aware of our business district. Our officers are constantly driving down Arinda Way. That style of crime is unique and different. Lafayette had to deal with one just recently. And throughout the state, it's kind of like a copycat type system of people doing this. We're aware of it. I can't speak to that case as much because, like I'd like to say is, we're investigating and we have a very good solve rate in this city for solving crimes. So we're working really hard on that right now. But it's kind of along the same lines when we had the numerous burglaries. Arindo had a huge part in that, in solving that. And now we're back down to way below where we should, or where I'd like to be even lower for residential burglaries, because we had an organized crew that went through hitting numerous cities throughout the 24 corridor and the 680 combined effort, we were able to stop it. So when we're, when these things are brought to us, we're kind of reactive, and then we become proactive and, and do our job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I had some. I wanted to, first of all, thank you for all the work you're also doing around and working with our city manager and city staff around evacuation planning and emergency preparedness, because I know there's been tabletop exercises and a lot that's gone into that, and doing the community education nights. As to Councilmember Hoxey's question, I know one thing we recently did is when we had a coffee with the chamber, they mentioned that they were interested in coffee with the police chief as well. And so that might be an opportunity to educate businesses, right, on that?
Yeah, it's scheduled. I responded to them. I'm just waiting for them to tell me what day to show up.
Well, thank you for doing that as well.
Of course.
And on the 911 calls you, you mentioned, I was kind of struck by the 30% of full staffing. Is that, is that county responsibility, state responsibility? Is it all over the place?
It's everywhere.
How can we help? What can be noisy about that?
It's, it's, it's a state, it's, I would say nationwide, but for what I know for the county, there are no police agencies in this, in Contra Costa County right now that are fully staffed.
Okay.
And that goes with their dispatch centers as well. It's just really hard to find people that want to get into this field at the moment, and to retain them and to keep them going. So yes, the best help is, hey, do you want to be a cop? Go talk to the chief and he'll help you on your way. If you want to do dispatch or whatever, that's one of the things that we are working on, is the citizens academy to kind of educate the citizens and to get those kind of grassroots, kind of like, you're a kid, you really like the cops, let's continue that and give you that experience so that maybe we can find some careers for some of our young people.
Great. And in our dispatch that the city of Arinda uses is through the county share, county?
Yes, correct.
And the last thing is, can you talk a little more about the arrest statistics and why it jumped so much between, I think it was 21 and 22 was?
So during the COVID pandemic, law enforcement really didn't know what our role was, as everybody was like basically staying at home. But we're not allowed to stay at home, so we have to go out. So being proactive, contacting the public was a difficult thing for us to do. You have masks on, people are afraid, six foot distancing, all of those things kind of made that kind of very hard for law enforcement to do their job, to get out and contact the community. After that, kind of, we went through that two years of trying to figure out the way. It was basically, hey, as long as we're vaccinated, we can move forward and go back to business as normal. And that's why all of a sudden, everything kind of started to pick back up. Not so much because of crime related, just now we can, we're not afraid, I guess would be the right word, to go out and contact people.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you, Chief Rossi. I guess I should, should I? Couldn't hear you. No, I just wanted to, city manager, is there anything else?
Oh, no, I just want to thank Chief Rossi, and I'm sure he'll be able to participate in the discussion about the LPRs again later. I'll make him stick around.
Great.
All right. Thank you, guys.
And while we're still on items for the good of the city.
Comment?
Oh, sure.
I failed to submit a card. I apologize.
No, of course. Go ahead.
As you all know, and as some of the people, other people here know, I am a frequent critic of the city. And I just want to say that I cannot compliment the chief, the officers, and the department enough. The data, the statistics are impressive, but at least for me personally, the most important thing is whether I feel safe, or whether if my wife goes out to Safeway after dark, she feels safe, and I feel safe that she can go out there. And it's, to me, it is and always has been way more important to feel safe than, than to look at the data. And since Chief Rossi has been here, I have felt very safe. I think the courtesy of the officers and of the chief, most of whom thankfully I rarely encounter, but the courtesy and the professionalism is of the highest order. And I thank you, chief, and I thank the folks in the city who, or wherever, whoever chose the chief, I guess maybe it was the sheriff's department, but whatever. I just want to say that as a frequent critic, I have no criticism of the police department and nothing but praised. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Warrenoff. Any other public comment on this item? And I know I, I just wanted to mention, oh, actually, I'll do this, this, that we have, I believe, a scout troop here, Troop 303. So thank you for coming. Next on our agenda is public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Additionally, a speaker has the option of addressing the council on an item listed on the agenda. the agenda if the speaker will not be present when that item is taken up. And so I know we have one speaker card for public forum. So Nick Warnoff.
Thank you. I am here tonight and keeping myself from the Warriors play in game tonight and here at this public forum because I want to urge everyone on the council and everyone here in this room to vote no on measure T, the Akalani's Union High School District Parcel Tax. There is enormous waste and fiscal mismanagement in the high school district. You could start with the fact that they're wasting a million dollars on a special election, right, that's going on right now, when they could have saved that money and had this parcel tax on the ballot last November, or they could put it on next November. You have a district with a variable demand for services, how many students are there, but they have overloaded the fixed cost side of the ledger and tied their hands on the variable cost. They are not the only district to have administrative bloat, but they do have administrative bloat. And with the declining student population, there should be some consolidation of administrative positions, so they need fewer administrators. The single most telling fact about the materials from the proponents of measure T, the single most significant fact is that there is not one word, not one word of any effort to cut costs, to manage expenses or the like. You can read that over and over and over again. There's not one word about cutting expenses. And the notion that they have put forward, the notion that the proponents have put forward, that there are some guardrails because they have an oversight committee and because no money can be spent on district office administrators, that's completely bogus. The parcel tax committee is a paper tiger, has no enforcement. And as we all know, money is fungible. So the parcel tax revenue may go into the general fund of the district, but that won't prevent the district from then sending money out to increase the district officers, the district administrators' compensation. So for those reasons and many, many others, I urge everyone here to vote no on measure T. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Continuing with public forum. Thank you.
Thank you very much, my favorite city council. Thank you for letting me speak. On this month, the month of, oh, and I am your librarian, Michael Beller, in this month, the month of April, which is Arab American Heritage Month, National Volunteer Month, and a month containing National Library Week. I come to you with an update on the busy library system and the busy branch. Seeing as it's also National Poetry Month, consider yourselves very lucky. I didn't start writing this earlier because it would have been in rhymed couplets. The library system continues to recover and improve from the COVID lows. As a library system, our combined general circulation improved by 4% this year, circulating over 7 million items throughout the county. The system's ebook circulation rose 18%, hitting 2,200,000 ebooks circulated. Please keep in mind that during COVID, we crossed the 1 million mark and thought that was a remarkable achievement. We've crossed 2 million now. With the addition of Hoopla to our ebook platform, in addition to Libby by Overdrive, I expect that to spike again this year. Our in-person library visits for the system rose 6% or over 2 million, almost 2,500 visits to our branches. Meanwhile, online visits to the library rose 22% to 6 million visits. As a branch, as a branch, the Orinda libraries also had a great year, actually a series of great years, but this year was particularly great. Our circulation rose another 4%. We had over 138 items that checked out this past year, physical items, physical from the library. Our ebook circulation rose 25% to 105,000 items. Our previous year, 2023, that was just over 75,000. So that's that's remarkable. As a physical space, Orinda is busy with an average of over 10,000 people coming into the library every single month, over 100 regular attendees to our weekly storytimes, and our meeting rooms are rarely, if ever, empty. We're a very used and dare I say, loved library. We've also moved beyond our boundaries. We soft launched our new story walk this past month by the Wilder Fields, funded by the Friends of the Orinda Library and collaborated with us, the city. Thank you so much, Parks and Rec. Pete the Cat is up there holding court right now with his new shoes. In short, the whole library system is busy and the Orinda branch is no exception. If you haven't seen us recently, please come on by and see why. We're happy to help you find books, navigate the electronic book platforms and provide programs to keep you interested. And if you're interested, the most popular books for the county in 2024 were Elephant and Piggy, The Thank You Book, Dogman, 20,000 Fleas Under the Sea, Divine Rivals, and The Woman by Kristin Hannah. And if you waited for either electronic books or physical copies this past year, be aware that your wait would have been longer had the Friends of the Orinda Library not contributed funding for additional copies of popular titles. Thank you very much. If anyone has any questions ever, you know I love questions.
Thank you so much for that lovely report.
Oh, we have an important question. Will you be making any special appearances this weekend?
Maybe. I will hop to it, yes.
Well said. Thank you for everything the library does. I actually did have a question that which is, you know, I heard a disturbing statistic recently about our huge budget cuts to our state library funding that was just, you know, horrible, really. So how, if at all, will that affect our Orinda library? Do we know yet?
I could talk very, very marginally about that. That's really a topic above my head. But I can say that the county as a whole has a dedicated funding stream. And so the and very little of that funding is going to come from the state library, it's coming from the county. So I don't think this year we're going to see any any sort of changes. We may lose an item here or there that was funded by the county, funded by the state. And I'll probably trumpet about that when it happens so that everyone knows that that we didn't just get rid of it.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. Yeah, these were federal cuts to our state library budget that I heard about.
Mayor, can I can I make a matter initiated? I'm a little saddened that the very cool and compelling library update came in public forum instead of something that's an agendized item so that we can have a little bit more of a discussion and ask more questions. And so because that was a great update, maybe not right away, but maybe in six months or something before the end of the calendar year, if we could have it as an item of the good of the city so that we can talk about Sunday hours and what the Friends of the Library has been doing, it's one of our key groups and assets, and that would be very nice. And I was gonna say, I got your email, but I think it might be nice to have a little bit more of an interactive.
There are consensus among the council to bring them. I would, yeah, agree with that as well. And we do, we have typically done that. I feel like we've done that in prior years. And maybe I'm wrong. Maybe it's just your public forum comments are so exhilarating.
I did talk to Allison recently, and I think she was willing to come and speak as well, so.
Okay.
Just to talk about the county system and some of the things that they're working on.
It would be great. Again, we can space it out, but that would be lovely.
Okay, thank you. Any other public forum? Seeing none, I will close public forum and we will move on to our consent calendar. The consent calendar section of the agenda consists of items that are acted on in one motion unless a council member or a member of the public requests that the council remove an item from the consent calendar for discussion. I don't believe I saw, did we have any request to remove any items?
Not that I've seen, no.
Okay. Do any council members want to pull any item from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, then do I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar as proposed?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that passes unanimously. Item G on our agenda is public hearing, and there are no public hearing items this evening. So that takes us to our policy matters. And our first policy matter is item H1, which is the Art in Public Places Committee Annual Report for Calendar Year 2024.
Good evening, mayor and council members. For the record, Todd Trimble, Director of Parks and Recreation, I'm just kicking it off. This is an item that you see annually about this time. You'll notice that there's some related items a little bit further down. So Rich is going to kick it off. Both Sheena, Recreation Supervisor Sheena Wallman is here, I'm here. If you have any additional questions, we don't have a presentation. You have the the report and Rich typically will quickly go through it in the manner that he always expertly does, and he'll be available for questions too. So this is your APPC chairman for or chairperson for quite some time, Rich Thompson.
Thank you all. In fact, I'm here to thank you for all the support you've had over these many years and particularly for calling the APPC question for the 15th of April, which is World Art Day. And that was proclaimed in 2019 by UNICEF. So your timing is just just superb. The only comment is that the committee strongly supports the recommendations for policy change. It will do a great deal of simplification for both the Parks and Rec staff and the committee itself. And the other is the raising of our value limit. And that's principally, that request is basically to allow us to react to special situations that that come up rarely, but they do come up. And one of this, one of these rare situations is the circumstances surrounding Cal Shakes. That's in limbo now, as you know, until at least the 20th of May. But before all that sort of materialized, we were subtly asked, could we take many, if not all, the pieces of art that are there now because East Bay Mud wanted them off the property? And so there we were, quickly doing the math and saying, well, we're stuck. We could have a special request and see if we could get something expedited. But this is just to allow a little bit more breathing room. We have no intention to run out and do more and more things just because we have a higher ceiling. So so that said, any any questions I might help you with?
I'm sure we might have some questions. I want to thank you for a lovely report. It's always beautiful to see the art embedded in there and recognize it from around town. But do we have questions?
My one question is, I was interested when we were doing the committee interviews this year, how small the committee is and because there's such kind of institutional knowledge and there's such a strong founding group, I'm a little bit concerned about your succession planning for this committee to make sure that you've got the next generation and the one after that learning and growing into these roles. Can you talk a little bit about how the APPC sort of extended group kind of nurtures the next generation to keep this going?
Yes. First of all, your concern is is our concern. And frankly, we have talked about it. We haven't come up with anything that would address the question. There are a couple of ideas, one of which is to increase the number on the committee, bring in new people and with some time in in on the committee and which maybe Ted or myself might transition out. The other possibility is keep the committee at seven. But maybe Ted, myself would take a just a public role. We would show up in meetings, we'd be simply doing the same things that we do now, but in an unofficial kind of way. But that that question's a very important one, and we need to address far more time on it.
Right. Other questions? One thing, I guess I just wanted to, first of all, yes, thank you so much, Chair Thompson, and for all the work you're all doing. One of the things that came out of the council appointments session that we had was that since Councilmember Riley is our cultural arts liaison and the liaison to your committee, and I'm currently this year as mayor, the two of us were interested in meeting with you and perhaps one other member of the committee to maybe talk more and brainstorm how we can work together and do some of this succession planning and also just to get your feedback.
It's a great idea.
So we'll we'll follow up with that and and schedule a date. And any other questions? Okay, one thing I was also wondering is, when are we going to know about the Cal Shake stuff? It sounded so exciting.
It won't be in May. The requests for proposals are due on the 20th, and there will be some processing time. It's all the way up to the East Bay Mud Board. You can tune into their meetings online and see what that or where that topic comes up, but it is definitely at discussion at the board level.
Okay, including the art.
Yeah. And so maybe June, hard to say.
Okay, well, we'll look forward to learning more. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I did not call, is there any public comment on this item, which is item H1? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Any further discussions? Thanks to council.
Just a volley over to one of our other agenda items is we had talked about the art and the mosaic that there was so much time and consensus spent on by this group that I think we all really liked and decided it wasn't appropriate for the kind of monumented entry. But I hope when we're talking about the Community Park Master Plan or other art in public places initiatives, that that artist and that mosaic concept isn't lost. And so when you guys are talking offline or when we're talking about the park, I'd love to see that come back in another in another way because I thought we had, it was a wonderful thing and it would be sad if we lost it entirely.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay, thank you so much. We will then move on to item H2 on our agenda, which are the revisions to the APPC policy and to approve a proposed public artwork funding agreement with the Orinda Community Foundation. Director Trimble?
That is correct. Again, for the record, thank you, Todd Trimble, Parks and Recreation Director, and Rich certainly kicked it off. As you know, the APPC has been around for, what, 17, 18 years and as you've alluded to, very, very successful, almost entirely thanks to the these guys. to, very, very successful, almost entirely thanks to the, these guys and, and our group. It's been a few years, about seven years, I think, since we've come to you with, with an item to update or recommend some edits to the policy. So I don't have a specific presentation other than the staff report. There's three main areas we're alluding to. One is to increase the term, the loan terms. Back in 2018, a big part of some of the revisions there were items put in place to help keep the requirements on staff relatively low. It is, it's obviously an active group and we, we are passionate and very appreciative to be able to, to, to work with them and help them through the, all the work that they do, but we just set some standards there to kind of make sure that we were keeping things as feasible and handable, you know, being able to handle the, the load as possible. So from there, we're, this item, the first item with the request for extension of the loans would help us with that. There's, there's close to fifty, well, I was going to say fifty pieces total, but you know, a couple of dozen pieces on loan, which, which require the agreements to be amended and updated. The other item, as you alluded to, is, Rich mentioned a cap on the loan value, requesting that move up from a current, including to the, the special circumstances, but also inflation. It's been seven years since, since we, we made that, that increase, so we're requesting that. And then we mentioned the, the, the funding agreement. Fortunately, the, the Arinda Park and Recreation, Recreation Foundation has been a part of this from the beginning, is no longer with us, although the funds have been transferred to the community foundation and they are willing and able to, to take that, that aspect on. So unless there's, Sheena and I are here to answer any questions about that or concerns and we could, we're ready to do that unless you.
Any questions about this item? Okay. It looks like there's no questions. I think we got a very thorough report and so then I will move, just open public comment if there's any. I see no public comment and have no cards, so I'll close public comment and come back for discussion on this item. Councilmember G?
I want to thank Rich and Ted for being here. Again, I'm very supportive of these changes. Again, I think the arts in public, art in public places has been one of our most successful things as a city. I think it, it continues to, you know, make our community beautiful and interesting and it's just, it, it has just been a real gem. So I think that, you know, the things being asked for are completely reasonable, good timing and very supportive. So I want to thank again to the community.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, I would just echo those comments. The volunteerism in this city is incredible and this committee takes it to a whole new level and has for so many years. So, you know, thank you for the beautification of, of Arinda. It's, it's gorgeous what we have here. And everything made sense to me. Yeah, I'm sorry, Councilmember Riley?
Just want to add that I'm fully supportive of the changes. Thank you for, so much for making this happen. And I just want to add that if you ever, you know, get, get to a point where you need some help or some bounce ideas off of us or me, feel free to, seems like, you know, getting a hold of all these new items is a big challenge and we're happy to help brainstorm.
We appreciate it. Go ahead.
Any other comments? Okay. Thank you so much and thank you, Chair Thompson, and thank you, Mr. Irwin, for coming here. So I think we just want to say thank you to the Arts in Public Places Committee.
I think we need to adopt the resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember G, do you want to?
Yes, we need, do we have a motion to adopt Resolution 2125, the City of Arinda Arts in Public Places Committee and Policy and to approve the public artwork funding agreement with the Arinda Community Foundation? So moved. Or second. Councilmember G moved, Councilmember Riley second. We'll do that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution and approval of funding passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on our agenda, I love our themed agenda today, is item H3, the Crossroads Park Arinda Sign.
So Mayor and council members, we're back. You gave us direction to go, see what we can figure out as it relates to coming up with a less expensive version of the sign, one that could be customized. The Finn sign got a lukewarm welcome when we presented it the last time. And so we tasked our consultant with doing some additional work and Siva is going to do the presentation tonight and I'll turn it over to Siva.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Director Christie is not in tonight, so I'm kind of holding the torch for him on this. As you remember, the January 21st city council meeting, you all had an opportunity to review the different options for the Crossroads Park. And at that time, the council asked staff to provide some minor modifications to the Finn sign, which was looked at as a possible alternative. Some of the things you're looking for is color choices and also to evaluate options that are less expensive than what was at that time looked for the Finn sign. So staff worked with the consultant, gets and associates to come up with a few options. I, I put those options that's in the report in the slide so that it's a larger screen everybody's able to see, other than that it's not a specific presentation. The options we have looked at, there is a couple of things I want to point out. One is the Finn sign that was presented previously, to give an idea, that's about like thirty feet long and four feet in height, and it's a custom sign that was going to be built in the field, cast in place, they call it, with a special foundation. So the options, some of the options we are going to be looking at tonight are pre-manufactured or pre-cast signs. So these get designed and built in a manufacturer facility, gets transported and put in place by them. So it's a slightly different technique, but it reduces the cost, overall cost of the installation. So with that said, the first sign that's in front of you is the Finn sign, but this is a slightly modified version. This is like the pre-cast version of the Finn sign. So the cost, although visually it looks similar to the previous ones we have presented to you, I mean, it is the same time, I believe the designer in the interest of time has slightly modified to fit in that location. But as you're seeing here, this is like twenty feet wide by four feet high roughly and pre-cast option. We were able to talk to a manufacturer and I determined that this is buildable as shown. I'll walk through quickly some of the other options and follow up with some more comments on that. So this is, let's call it option one. Sorry, I went a little too far. All right, so this is option two. This is a typical prema, pre-cast sign design, following the Finn pattern, but gives you a slightly different color choice on that. These colors are, our understanding is there is quite a few options of colors that can be chosen from. We do not have a clear gasp of extract level of palette that's available, but you know, there's plenty of options we can look at if colors is not concerned. And then the font, as you can see, this font kind of reflects our logo font, so to speak. Again, the sign is twenty feet wide and about four feet long. Here's a different color version of it, green tone. I don't know if it shows up clear in this large screen, but, and then one other color version, slightly darker green tones. Same sign, only thing is the color tone. And then staff also worked with the consultant to look at an alternative option, kind of having our logo as a background theme and see how that would show up. So the last option we have is basically a development of, based on our city logo. Again, same size sign. The cost for all these options, we estimate to be about $60,000 for the sign itself and an additional $5,000 for the installation component. And this will be done independent of the project cost, so it does help with the constructability of it if we take this approach. The staff report includes some budget items in the table in the back. I'm happy to walk you through, but with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Questions? Councilmember G?
I have two questions. Thank you very much, Siva. My first question, it doesn't matter which version it is, the, how well do we understand the durability of the color? The color, I assume, is mixed in, or the pigment's actually mixed into the, the pre-cast process, right?
That's our understanding, right? The concrete mix itself will be that tone. We do not have clarity on fadeability and stuff, but yes, it's not like a painted surface.
Right. So I guess I'm still kind of curious as to what their experience is with the durability. So, and then the other question I have, and again, it's, it's not showing in this visual, so I'm, I'm trying to figure out how far apart they are, but what happens to the other sign that's out there that has the community notice things on it? In all honesty, I don't even know who that sign belongs to.
Oh, it belongs to us, yes.
It belongs to us?
It does, yes.
So the question I have is, does it stay? Does it go?
It goes.
It goes?
It's going to go.
And then, okay, so the whole idea is it just goes away? So it's not a visual thing?
That, that sign needs, I mean, we've done some, some repair work and Todd could speak to it more directly because he's been dealing with this sign for many years, but that's, staff has been trying to figure out whether there's a more modified, modern way we can do signage. That sign, in its, the way it is currently, probably won't be there over the long term. We're looking at potential different options.
Yeah, I, I think the short answer, unless we're directed otherwise, is that the, the community message board, as it's called, and it's still utilized pretty regularly as we get requests all the time, it is, it does take staff time to put the letters up, but it has deteriorated, no question. We've touched it up. Our next effort is to, to try to find a method to, to help keep the letters in, in there. It's, it's, it had other methods over the years that have kind of gotten old, but it would be visible in this version. You just, it's kind of blocked out, but it would easily be visible behind the sign. It's much further back. But what we ultimately end up doing, we'll, we'll get your feedback on. But in the short answer is it'll still be there, still be visible. We're working on kind of getting it serviceable. It is, again, very popular and we get a lot of requests to put messages up, but it's not impeded by this, this sign.
We haven't had a lot of discussions yet about modernizing it, but that would be the intention, that we would try to get to some, if we are going to continue to have a community sign, you know, ability for us to post events and activities, that it be more modern than the sign that you see out there now. But we haven't gotten into a lot of detailed discussion about that at this point.
I have one question about, was there going to be some lighting after dark, some uplighting or something like that? And is that going to be the same for all four versions or do they vary?
The project design includes lighting. My understanding is it's going to be front-facing lighting, so the lighting will be in front of the sign, looking at it. So it, yeah, it would apply to any type of sign.
Other questions?
I just wanted to, for scale purposes, I was just looking at your dais is about 24 feet wide, so when you, when we're talking about how big this sign will be, it'll be fairly substantial even at 20 feet, 30 feet, which was the original sign, width was pretty substantial. So I just wanted to make sure you had that context of how big this sign could be.
Other questions? Councilmember Riley?
Okay, so lots of questions are coming up. The placement of the, is the placement of the 20-foot sign the same, is it as close to the big traffic light as it was with the 30? So that it hasn't moved any closer to the light post or it's shorter on the left side when you're facing it?
There were a couple of versions of the 30-foot sign, so originally when it was started, that sign was between the two sign posts, all the way in the corner, but after then we moved it. So that, the moved location is the same since we've been looking at it. The, the size may, because it's a photo rendering, the size may portray it as slightly different.
So the location is the same distance from the traffic light as it was when it was 30 feet? Does that make sense? You haven't moved it towards the light or away from the light? You shortened it?
No, the intent was to keep it in the same location.
Right, but you shortened it on the left. Okay. And then the, you're talking about lighting for the sign, but I also want to make sure about lighting, and maybe this isn't appropriate to ask you, but I want to make sure we have lighting box or whatever it's called so that we can light up trees. I don't know if this is in your thinking.
They will have to run power lines, wiring for the lighting of these signs, so even though we are not replacing all the hardscape, whatever they do, we should be able to easily accommodate additional points.
I want to make sure we get enough of a box or juice box to make sure we can do what we would like to do with the trees. I had another one, but I'll come back, I guess.
Okay. Any questions? Councilmember Hoxey?
So does the sign need to be that long? Like the first three seem to have all of that space that's, doesn't have anything in it. And I was just wondering why and whether it needs to be that long? Is that designed so it looks like a hill or is that? I, I, I wasn't part of the original discussion, so maybe there's thought that had gone into that design that I'm not aware of, but it just seems like.
The, the, this design, what we are referring to as the Finn sign, was originally approved by the city council back in 2017, I believe. So when the sign discussions were brought up, this was further refined. So that's why these designs that's in front of you tonight are kind of reflective of that. The idea was to take the Finn design idea and try to make it like a pre-manufactured design, fit within their parameters and this is the outcome of it.
I'm just wondering if we could cut it off and save a little money and achieve the same thing? I don't know.
Yeah, they, they come in different sizes, so if that is definitely interesting, there is ways to do it. Again, it might affect the proportion of it, so it may have to be looked at.
And then on the last design that looks like the hills, is there any way to make Arinda more prominent? It seems to sort of recede into the design and not stand out as much.
Yeah, the answer is yes. We can design it. I think what staff's looking for tonight is actually probably.
Direction?
Direction on which one of these signs is preferred. And if, if there is a clear direction on like, for example, the logo-based sign is the preferred one, then we can definitely look at alternative color options or fonts or size of the sign itself or the size of the lettering. That's definitely doable if there is specific needs that needs to be looked at.
Now, I, just one more, and that is, I'm, I'm concerned if we're going to try to do some sort of, like the schools went to the electronic signs that show all the upcoming events and whatever and that are much easier to handle from an office. If we're going to do something like that, don't we have to sort of coordinate that kind of a sign with whatever Arinda sign, so it's all sort of one design as opposed to two separate things?
So the conversation, my understanding historically, has not been about combining those two into one. And so we haven't looked at it from that perspective. We've been trying to deal with sort of this monument gateway feature, which is the entry piece, the community reader board sign. We would have to look again. We could talk about whether or not this is the appropriate place for that long term or whether there's other places we could be looking for something like that. So I think that's a discussion that the council could have. If you, if you'd like to have the reader board move to a different location, if you want to look at it here, we could certainly make anything look good, but you have to decide, I mean, this was never part of the, any of the initial, as far as I understand, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, and many of you that have sat up here for years talking about this sign can also correct me if I'm, if I'm stating that.
I apologize because I am so new to this.
Yeah, so I think we would, we would think we should treat them as separate issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Riley?
The other question I wanted to ask earlier was, I think, Councilmember G was getting at was like, the life of this sign. She was talking about the color of the concrete and how long that color would last. And I'm taking it one step further and wondering how long this whole sign's going to last? Does it have a useful life?
Right, it is made of concrete, so it's like, you know, 100 years is...
Okay, okay. But the color might go fade.
Like I said, the pigments, the concrete itself is pigmented. I mean, I cannot speak for the warranty of the color itself, but it's very common in what you see in typical concrete building faces. So it's, I can speak from the technology side. It's been there long enough that I don't think it'll be something we would, should be worried about changing in the next few, like decade or two even.
I think what you'll have to, will have to address is the continued cleaning of it so that it doesn't look like it's accumulated and look like it's faded because there's, we have to keep it clean.
Right, or mold or...
Keep it clean.
Other questions? We'll have an opportunity, of course, to discuss and have feedback, but... Okay. I will then open for public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this item? No? Okay. I will, no, I know we have our Art in Public Places folks here, so... Okay, great. You can just go ahead and introduce yourself. It's fine, you don't need to submit a speaker card.
You can do it right now. You can do the card after.
Oh, okay.
Don't worry about it, we'll just...
My name is Ted Urban. I live at 120 Alta Hacienda, Arinda. Probably been involved in the sign for eight years. Actively, five years. Probably 30 meetings with combined meetings between Art in Public Places, City Park and Rec Committee, joint meetings, staff meetings. We went through all the parameters regarding the sign. We looked at every possible alternative for these signs. David Gates was the original consultant. He then retired from his firm and his daughter and principal in his firm took over his position regarding consulting with you folks regarding the design. And at some point, the city made a decision to take the whole idea of the sign away from the committee review, whether it's our committee or any of the other committees, and take it upon themselves to decide, we can come up with a sign. And that's your prerogative because you're the city council. I could only tell you on a personal basis, if that sign I'm looking at, which is number three in a series of three, would have come before this committee, it would have been blown out of the water. So I have no idea where this is going. I really don't. It's a mystery to me. When the first sign came up, which had the court ten with the sign all cut out in very simple letters, it was a very low-key, very sophisticated approach to signing Arinda, and people liked it until PG&E said, "Oh, you can't have metal. Even though you can park cars under all of our power towers, you can't have a metal sign." So we were directed to think outside the box and how could we create that sense of a sign? And the elements that all three signs have is the wavy background figure to that. But what evolved, and it was an evolution with a tremendous amount of community input from many individuals and many artists that had a real sense of design, to create something that was truly an art statement for Arinda. It wasn't just a sign. The sign was important, but the whole element, the support of the sign was very important. And the idea then was to put it into a matrix of ceramic work that could cover an element as a backdrop for the sign. And that's where we left it. And we had actually gotten to the point where everyone seemed to agree, and it was going to be...
Mr. Urban, I'm sorry, I need, can I ask a question since? No, 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 hold on. Since Mr. Urban is a member of the Arts in Public Places Committee, can we ask him questions?
You can ask any speaker questions. It won't come out of the three minutes, but they can choose whether to answer.
Okay. So your time is up, but we're gonna, we may have questions for you, so just stay there. And if, if we ask you questions, you are not required to answer them, just so you know. I would, for one, would love to hear your thoughts on the existing proposals here.
So I can continue?
Please.
Thank you. And thank you also. And I don't want to beat this to death. I mean, you guys have seen this project for some time. I think what's really important is that you have to decide whether this requires a community input process through people that somehow have a vested interest in the design of things that go into their community, whether it's from Art in Public Places or members that were on the Park and Rec Commission, all of which voiced strong feelings about how design should fit in the community. And they brought those before the collective group, and we made many discussions back and forth to come up with a solution. That solution got to the point where, I thought frankly, it was going to the consultant to come up with bids to complete that sign. It was ready to go. And then suddenly, we were told with a meeting we had from Public Works that attended the meeting that they had no clue that sign was what we had approved. Where did that happen from? How did that come out of it blue? And then it worked backwards from there to say that the city has a responsibility to oversee the cost for such a project, and therefore should start to go back through Public Works, and they would take charge of the project, and they would start talking to the consultant. And through that discussion with the consultant, they would come up with the final solution. This is what you have. We're no longer involved, and we haven't been involved for a year and a half. And you have the prerogative as a council to listen to your staff and say, they have the expertise, we think they're fine. Let's let them decide what's best for the community and approve that sign. But you basically set all that work we did before completely aside. It's gone. It's no longer involved. And so I'm here as a very disenchanted individual.
Yes.
Thank you.
There may, are there other questions?
I just have one question.
Yeah.
So none of these signs look anything like the sign that your committee had proposed?
I'm sorry, I have a hearing issue.
Councilmember Hoxey is asking, she's asking, none of these signs look anything like the sign that your committee proposed? The sign that you're referring to was a mosaic sign?
The closest thing that came to what we had approved was the second sign that was in the exhibits.
Okay.
That was the closest one.
Can we see that?
It missed that design detailing by quite a bit, frankly. It had, it had two levels of waves in that sign with one wave behind another wave in order to give you a sense of depth of the hills behind it. It was really important to certain members to have the, the lettering reflect what was on the theater as opposed to choices, because we have all kinds of choices in Arinda about what the word Arinda means and what letter choices you pick to say Arinda. And if you look at the different ones, they show you different choices. That became an important element for several people that wanted to promote the project. The coup de grâce, really, in this whole thing was when the issue came up of how are you going to ever build this sign? What's the cost? Who's going to pay for it? And the city said, "Well, we'll put up $50,000 to help get this process along and get it designed." And the OCF said, "We would put up, up to $350,000 to get this work done" until that sign was changed and removed. And it was, and the park basically was, the city said, "Oh, we need to do the park first, not the sign. Let's just get the park work done." And we looked at the park. We said, "All the things that the consultant is going to do to redo the park is going to look like the old park. All the same patterns, all the same materials in different places. What a waste of money. Let's just focus on something that makes sense, the sign." OCF said, "We'll put money towards a sign. That makes sense. We can get that started. We'll do that project." Okay? And then OCF came back and was denied that avenue to complete the sign. So they're no longer financing your project. Where's your money coming from? If it has to come from the community, don't you think you ought to ask the community's input for what they think it should be? Thank you.
Any other questions or, okay, any other public comment on this item?
We don't happen to have a...
Let me just, okay. Any other public comment on this item? Okay. Seeing that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion. Councilmember G.
Do we have a picture of the final mosaic sign? It's been so long, I can't even remember what it looked like.
I do not have one at the moment.
So... Yeah, I think the whole reason was the cost, right?
Right.
Also, it was an artist's project, so it's more complicated to take care of it and to maintain it when it's owned by an artist and not just a city project.
And a project like that, I think we would have had to go through an RFP process.
It would have been, typically, when you have a call for a piece of public art, you go through a more competitive process of selecting artists to submit proposals, multiple artists, so that you have options to choose from and provide direction. And you give them a stipend to do that, to help with the creative process. And then you move into trying to, you know, narrow down which artists you'd wish to work with. And again, it was a choice. Do you want to work with an artist to do this? Or do you want to try and just do a gateway entry feature sign, which we talked about, I think, at the last meeting or the meeting prior to that? So it was just a direction you would have to choose, and you have a lot less flexibility, once it's a piece of public art, about your continued maintenance of it. It does require input from the artist.
And the funding, what I recall is the, the, the cost of it was much, much more. Yep. Right. So where do we go from here?
I just want to weigh in on this thing about the mosaic versus the monumented entry because I recall there was a lot of factual confusion about that question of, you know, in my recollection, it was not an expense decision first and foremost. It was the totality of, you know, a mosaic sign versus something a little bit more sort of, you know, classic, you know, less of a piece of art and more something that was a sign. It was a cost issue, although there were a lot of different opinions about what the cost of the sign was versus how it was maybe being represented. I think there was a, the artists seemed to feel that the cost was being presented in an inflated way. And so I don't know that we really went down that road. I think we decided that because of the, the creative control, the maintenance, a little bit the cost, but also just what this item was for this location, that we decided to go down the path of a more classic sign. So I just didn't want to get too hung up about this being all about the budget because it's not about spending, you know, $10,000 for, you know, we had the individual Arinda letters that I think we all were not on board with. So it's, it's more a question of signage per se.
Go ahead.
I'm almost scared to ask, but where are we with the actual park part of it and the planting and all that?
I'm glad you asked. We actually have a response to that.
The design has progressed pretty well, so the cost estimate that's shown in the staff report, what's on the current proposal for this thing, includes the comments that was provided by the city council previously and how the project needs to be approached. And I believe the consultant has gotten some feedback from the garden club about the plantings and stuff, so they're going to work on incorporating that. If I, to put it one way, if we have a decision made on the sign, we should be able to wrap the plants up and by the summer and go out for bids, basically.
Okay. Councilmember Riley?
Does that mean you would plant by fall? Or just, you would, you have to plant by the fall in order to plant? So could you go out for bids? Could you get your bids and go to work by November and plant by November? No?
I don't have a clear grasp of exactly the construction timeline for it, but since we have a reduced scope, I would say yes, it should be doable. More than likely, we can have it planted by fall. Depends when you go out to bid.
Are you crossing both your fingers and your toes?
The project, in my mind, this project is the whole project when I was looking at it more in depth. But now we have a more, a reduced version of it, mostly involving landscaping. There's very less hardscape or concrete work involved, which is usually the more time-consuming part of it. So it should be a quick delivery project.
Couldn't you plant before you install the sign?
It would be...
Some of it?
Yeah, it would be parallel or even before because the sign should not affect the planting activities.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, other comments?
I'll get some balls rolling here.
I'm ready to.
I really like the "welcome to" aspect of the first sign. I think it, for some reason, I just emotionally react differently to something that says "welcome to Arinda." And I really liked that first sign. I think we were only reacting to the fact that one of our last comments was just, it looked sort of like rusty brown. It was hard to tell in just a computer image what it was going to look like. And so it may be one of those where we see materials boards and it looks great. We just couldn't tell. But when I saw the, the three variations of that sort of plain Arinda sign, I thought the font that we use in the town logo doesn't translate when you blow it up that big. I thought the, the middle three options looked very plain in a way that I thought the first one looked more polished, more sophisticated. So I, I had a good reaction to that, and the fourth one intrigues me. I'm interested to hear other people's thoughts, but the middle three for me felt like they were value engineered a little bit.
Anyone else want to weigh in?
Well, I will, I guess.
Okay, Councilmember Hoxey?
I agree with Councilmember Iverson. I like the "welcome to." I don't love any of them. They all seem to me to be a little bit like you're going into a business park and not into the city of Arinda. And the third one somehow, I mean, the last one with the hills is interesting, but it looks like, you know, it's not flimsy, but it looks, I don't know, it looks out of proportion or something. I'm not an artist, but the Arinda doesn't seem big enough and in the center enough. And I don't know, it doesn't seem quite right. So I don't know that that's very helpful, but I do like "welcome to," and I would definitely like to see that included on a sign.
Anyone else?
I guess, in terms of color, I like the earth tones as opposed to the greens. And I think it just blends in with the landscaping nicer than the greens. The greens kind of look, I don't know, they don't, they don't blend as well for me. And I like a strong contrast between the color of the background and the letter. And I'm not sure in this version, of this one, which was our first one, I don't know if the letters pop as much as they can pop. So to me, it's really important, you can read it and then if you're just driving by and you know where you are, okay, welcome to Arinda, you know, not like standing parked there figuring it out. okay, welcome to Arinda, you know, not like standing that parked there figuring it out. And then in terms of the rest of the signs, I would, in terms of picking an actual sign, I'd pick number one or number two. I don't have the, if you could switch to that for me. I don't have strong feelings against number two, like I might have heard. I don't have strong feelings about that, the lettering, I think the lettering is fine on this version. And I know you can add, or I'm pretty sure you can add, welcome to Arinda on these other versions, you don't, correct?
You can, I think what would, what makes it a little bit unique is that this is a very specific type of font. And so we would have to play around with what welcome to font would be in relation to this. It would have to complement it, wherein the original Finn sign, it was very much, the script was complimentary to the font below it. So we would just need to play around with that. If we wanted to keep this more traditional logo font versus a more standard font use as we showed in the original Finn sign.
Can, can we ask that, is this, are, are the letters recessed into, on this version? Whereas on the first one, are they attached?
Raised.
Yes, that's correct.
Raised?
Yeah, the letters on these concrete ones are recessed letters.
I mean, is that the preference because of just maintenance and?
It's the, we, we were going to, you asked us to bring back a lesser.
Lesser cost.
A lesser cost option, so we brought back one which would be in basically engraved into this, the concrete.
But weren't we told number one was the same price as number, as the others? All these are the same price now?
No, the first one is the original, which is.
I think we heard it differently.
So I, I don't know what's the easier way to say it. So the signs that were presented before, they were definitely letters that are placed on top of it and custom built signs. That's the reason. So these are prefab signs printed, and we believe the first sign also is imprinted letters. Although the, I think the confusion is coming from probably the use of the prior signs image to create this rendering. But the cost is the same for all the options that's in front of you tonight. And the reason for that is because they're all precast and there is no external customization beyond the typical design.
But clear, in this design, are these letters pinned? Or is that it, letters shown as engraved into the concrete?
We believe it's engraved into the concrete, it's recessed or.
They're shiny.
I know, it's.
Those, those do not look engraved, those are not engraved.
Maybe this isn't the correct photo, you, you, you didn't create a new photo of new number one.
The, the designer had to use the previous design photo to render it.
This is the original Finn sign, yes, that's what it.
Right, so we are not looking at a new number one. We are looking at old number one that's 20 feet.
There is a couple of differences, the original one was, yes, it's longer than this one that's shown here. And also the original was like a curved custom design. This one's same like the other signs, just a straight precast sign. Yeah, I, I went that the picture you're looking at it is very, I don't know if it's exactly the same or close to it, but they definitely used the prior picture to come up with this.
Can I ask, so for cost, the original Finn sign here on the table that we're presented with is referring, the cost for that is under January 2025 scope, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And the 2018 design that is referenced here is the mosaic, is that correct? Or is that something else? No, that was a Finn sign that was 30 feet long? We know.
The 2018 design had only the Finn sign that was 30 feet long. There was, none of these options existed at that time, that was the only sign that was.
Got it.
To the council. The January 2025 scope is the Finn sign, the smaller one, but the custom, still the custom one with the custom pedestal and the curved version of it.
Okay.
And then based on request for a, like a lower cost option to be looked at is what you're seeing in front of you tonight, the precast versions.
So for current proposal, the lower cost options, that refers to options one through four?
Yes.
Yes.
Correct, okay.
So I'm still confused because what's written in the staff report as attachments A through E, the first one's described as the original Finn sign, and I'm hearing tonight that that is the new Finn sign. And that there really are five options, whereas this describes four. So I'm, I don't know if we are understanding this.
I think that, yeah, it is, there's too many similar combinations we are looking at. One way to look at it is if we want the original Finn sign as it was originally designed, the curved version with the custom implementations, it is going to be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the 20 foot version and then a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the 30 foot version.
I thought you said all the options were the same price tonight, and now you're.
No, there, there is, I'm, I'm explaining the prior versions of the Finn sign as it was presented to you. So if the 30 foot, so if, if you're looking at the cost column, the first column, that 2018 design is 30 foot wide Finn sign, custom design, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. January scope is still the custom design, smaller size for the hundred and twenty thousand dollar cost. And then what you're seeing today as the precast options are the sixty five thousand dollar versions.
Right.
Now, the Finn sign can also be made in the precast versions. It is not going to have the curves like we would see in the prior designs, that's one change. It's going to be straight. And then second one is it's going to be precast and made in a manufacturing facility and come and put together. The only confirmation that we need to make is the lettering. Our understanding was all the precast signs included inset letters, they were not attached letters. So I do see the confusion and I do not unfortunately have the specific answer for that. Hopefully that.
Wait, you just also said that the Finn sign at the lower cost would not have the curves?
Yeah.
So it would be a different shape and the different lettering.
Yes, and also the pedestal, if you all remember, that we had a special artistic footing or a bottom portion of the sign. This will not have that, it'll be a simpler foundation that gets mounted on concrete.
Okay. Unfortunately, I feel like I need to see the new version of this one. I mean, I, I can't visualize what the recessed lettering is going to look like and what the recessed cursive writing is going to look like in welcome. I mean, is it going to pop?
We, so this design, the options one, two, and three that you're seeing tonight is actually a derivative of the Finn sign. As you can see, the, the shape representation is actually of the Finn sign. Lettering wise, we will have to get back to you on that. If you want to see how it's going to look, we will have to.
We can come back.
Yeah.
I hate to say we'll come back to another meeting, but we can come back to another meeting and we could share with you the original Finn sign, which has been modified to the precast version. And then we'll answer the questions of whether or not this, the lettering must be inset or whether or not they could be pinned to the sign. So we'll answer that question because I think pin looks nicer. I'm just, I'm not speaking on behalf of the council, you guys can decide. Excuse me. It, there may be a little bit more cost associated with that. We would have to, we would have to just clarify with Gates. They weren't, this was originally going to be on the April 7th meeting with these two back to back meetings. And Gates could not be here tonight at this meeting, but we wanted to make sure we got some direction. So in hindsight, we probably should have waited.
Councilmember G.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, you shouldn't be sorry, although I will point out that we are now on the borderline of having spent three times the duration in years on this little park that it took to build the Golden Gate Bridge, okay? So, but I have an even media request, which is I would love to see what the whole thing is going to look like. Like, why can't we see what the plantings look like with the sign? And I rarely, rarely would criticize, you know, what we're getting to look at. But the visualization here is just not what it needs to be. I mean, quite frankly, a 15 year old with prepackaged software, I think, could show us more of what we would like to see, including the plantings or whatever. So, I mean, I've got to believe that Gates can do better than what we're seeing. I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'm not trying to up the cost, but the visualization is just not adequate, in my opinion. So I would love to see what the whole thing's going to look like. I, I mean, I'm in general in agreement along, I like the welcome to, okay, so maybe we have consensus there. I like the welcome to and I like, you know, given that we're not going to make it into a great piece of artwork that we're, you know, keeping the costs contained. But I just think it would be nice if we could see what the whole thing looks like and then actually get it done.
Yes, and if I could just ask a clarifying, so I'm hearing, I'm not hearing a lot of warm fuzzies for the original logo design, font design.
I do want to chime in.
Yeah, okay.
But go ahead first, go ahead, I've been talking. I, I, I don't love any of these at all. I, I really actually kind of, my first reaction, I guess I'm getting a little more convinced here, but my first reaction was I really disliked the Finn sign. I thought maybe the third one or the second one was okay, but I don't love the concrete. I, I hate to say this, but I would like to just know the costs and go back to. I remember when we looked at the mosaic, it was a very, it was, the colors were really bright and it was sort of this Gaudi style and it was a really different visual than I, you know, then we got this email indicating that the visual could be different. So I hate to say it, but what would be really helpful is to, first of all, see the whole rendering, but also see that sign. This also just seemed 20 feet seems really long. I know originally it was thought of as 30, maybe it's not because you're seeing it from the street, but it is a pretty small park as well. So, you know, I don't, it, it would be helpful, I think, in addition to seeing visuals of the options that actually were, are available to us that we're looking at. So the Finn sign redone with the landscaping, I don't, if that can be done in a picture. I mean, again, we don't want to spend a ton of money getting more and more feedback because this is, you know, borders on absurd in terms of how much time and money we've spent on these diagrams and where we're at, but it would be helpful to have a chart, I think, also that has the costs really, I, I would love to, to also see that mosaic in the cost. I think my recollection, it was a lot larger and while there was an issue with the design and the colors, cost was an issue, right? A big issue for me, at least I remember, but.
So, so that's my feedback, which I know is not helpful. I think the city attorney was just giving feedback, we don't have any rights to use that art in terms of displaying it. I want to be, you know, conscientious of that.
And that whole process was, yeah, okay.
I'm making, I'm going to make a suggestion.
Yes.
Which is, does the council want to establish a small ad hoc committee to work on the signs so that we can work through some of these issues with those that are most interested in its, its look and feel? And then we can maybe work with you offline, work through some of these issues, look at some different variations and then be prepared to have the committee recommend something back to the council.
I would like this, this is too iterative to do in formal meetings every single time.
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
Do you think that would make this go faster?
Um, I think it would, well, it depends, but I would say, I would say at least from the staff side, we wouldn't spend as much time preparing an item for councils' consideration. If we could quickly share with you some new concepts and get your quick feedback on whether or not we're headed in the right direction and then we can move forward in that way a little bit quicker. I'm hopeful that it would make the process go faster to a point where you're all satisfied now.
And I do sincerely believe that there is very, very readily available visualization software that is so much better than what we're seeing. I mean, if they can't come up with that, they're, you know.
If I may add some clarification, I do not want to speak for the designer here because I don't have a hundred clear understanding. I'm just looking at the image in front of us and I do recognize the trees that they're showing in the back. It actually reflects some of the planting that we were looking at before. So I, I believe there is some rendering included in this, but to what extent, I'm not.
I mean, I, I think we've had a limited design contract with Gates on this project and we might need to explore that a little bit more and see if we need to get a, a design contract that's consistent with what we need, given the feedback we received.
Councilmember Riley?
Before we discuss the ad hoc thing, can I go back to the rendering thing? So to me, all of these look like they're stark and they're just sitting, jutting up in the air, just like when you build a new house and there's no landscaping and you think, oh my God, when are we going to get the trees to grow and soften this hard, hard, hard looking house? And that's what's going on with me with these stark signs. So in the rendering, I would love it to be nestled or, you know, shown where the planting softened the sign. I don't want them to hide the sign, but there's a way to make it feel like it's supposed to be there.
That's a good point.
But it's also right by the sidewalk, so I don't.
No, there's, there's, there is a row of plants.
There's some, I just don't, it's not going to be the same as your landscaping growing in. I just, I, I'm a little bit worried, but I, I would also remind everybody, the next time you go to Lafayette, look at their sign, it's super plain, but it's nice. It's like a first do no harm kind of a thing. It's like, as long as it's not tacky and it doesn't look like it should be at a skateboard park, we're in a really good place, so we don't need to go crazy on this being a statement piece. I think it's a, it's a do something that isn't going to get a big negative reaction, which I, you know, I hate to be so safe, but I, I feel like that's a, a big part of what we're trying to do. It was one of my concerns about some of the mosaic renderings is it could be a love hate thing. But I know some of these more economical designs, I'm having a similar reaction to, so.
I would also say if you decide you want to form an ad hoc committee, give some, right now, because you asked to come back with half the cost options, that's what we've done.
Right.
And so if you want to, you know, lean back into the, the hundred and twenty thousand dollar range options, I'm sure that, I mean, I just want to make sure when, if there is an ad hoc forum, that there's some direction, that some flexibility that the ad hoc could be looking at things that are in the 120 range as opposed to the 60,000 dollar range, that gives you more design elements that you might be looking for.
I mean, I'd like to just be presented with the options, but it may be that budget. Budget is a very real limitation, this is already costing quite a bit.
I, that's where I keep getting so frustrated. I mean, there is so much beautiful software in the world these days that makes all of this so easy. Talented people can do 150 what ifs of this picture in five minutes. I know it, I mean, this was my profession. These people are not coming through enough for what we're paying them, I'm sorry. So I do think staff needs to take a hard look at that. I think we've already paid them too much for what we're getting, but I think it is completely fair for the council. I think the ad hoc committee is a great idea, but I think it's completely fair for the council to see what the whole thing is going to look like, what the plantings are going to look like and what the sign's going to look like. And I do agree with the vice mayor that, that, you know, just having a nice, you know, not outrageously controversial sign would probably be fine. But I will also mention that, having been to every city in the county, we are like the only city that like doesn't even have a real sign. So, I mean, we, we do need to get this done, really, we do.
But I don't want it to look like a business park.
Would be better than what we have right now.
Perhaps. Okay, so I, I, just as if I can narrow it down, I'd like to see the price of sign number one with being 20 feet and having the raised lettering. We don't have that, we don't have that, that would be great, one discreet thing to do. I don't, and I don't need to see the mosaic again. I, I don't want to have more choices, I want us to be narrowing them. I want it to move forward and embrace what we have.
May I ask a clarifying question?
I would like feedback on the, the costs of that, just to refresh my recollection. But I can also go back to a former agenda item and answer that question in my mind offline, so.
On the mosaic, as I recall, the price was just for the artwork, it didn't involve, it didn't include any of the installation.
Right, I would. Right, I recalled it being a lot more.
And then it was more.
Yes, that's what I recall too.
I just wanted to make a clarifying question on that. So what I heard is that this is sign option one that you're referring to, the fin sign. During discussion, I realized that one thing that we didn't have an answer tonight for you is the fact that whether it's inset letters that you're seeing being presented or attached letters and the preference is to get overlay letters.
Can you really get it in where it's inset, because we're not seeing a picture of it? And then if it's the raised kind, how much?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so do we have a?
I was just gonna say, on this one, the color is more metallic looking. It looks like almost gold or something, which looks kind of nice for.
The background or the?
No, the letters.
It looks silver to me.
And if they're engraved in inset, I don't think it would be that ability to have that kind of a color.
Yeah, shiny. Do we have a, do we need a motion to create an ad hoc committee? Yes, so do we have a motion to create an ad hoc committee? I'll move to do that. Do we have a second?
I'll second him.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, so that passes unanimously. Now who wants to serve on the ad hoc?
I would really love to be on the ad hoc on this one.
Great. Vice mayor, who else is interested, anyone? Councilmember Riley is somewhat nodding.
Sure.
Great, not me. Is anyone else interested? Okay, okay. All right, then I would like to nominate Vice Mayor Iverson and Councilmember Riley to serve on the ad hoc committee. Great, do we need a second for that? Or no? Yes, okay.
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that passes.
Great.
We'll be in touch. Thank you, everybody. Okay. Item H4 on our agenda is the community park master plan update and we are asked for, to provide feedback on the master plan conceptual design.
Mayor and councilmembers, Todd is going to be presenting again on the community park master plan. And the context for this is to, as we talk about the next item after this under the CIP, I wanted to make sure there was some context. The master plan hasn't been discussed in great detail with the council in a very long time. The costs associated with the, kind of the big picture of all the things that would be incorporated have gone up significantly and I just wanted to make sure the council had an opportunity to specifically talk about what is being proposed in the long-term vision for the park and get some feedback if we're, if we're still headed in that same direction. Thank you.
Everybody have it, okay. Must say I'm a little apprehensive, but I'm gonna give it.
I'm sorry.
My best shot. I mean, the city manager and I were kind of discussing too. I mean, the report, some, most of you have seen in the past in most of the same scenario where, not unlike Crossroads, this project is, was initiated years before I started. And it started with kind of a renovation plan to improve the restroom and rehabilitate the gazebo. That was the original plan way back, I think in 2013 and it quickly expanded to the whole, pretty much, you know, the broader sense of the, of the park. So what we thought we'd do, and we've been dealing with a little bit of, some roadblocks and some questions and in lieu of going through it on a line item basis and like city manager indicated, we're doing this before the CIP presentation was. I wanted to try to figure out a way to maybe explain a little bit more in kind of really looking at it and what, 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 what the project, at least in our minds, is. And I think some of you have indicated that. Remember with the, the, the original concept was approved in 2018. It's similar to what it is now. There was a, the original concept had bocce courts where the practice court is, the half court, right? And the only other thing is it had an additional restroom over kind of where the staircase entrance is on Arinda Way. At that first approval meeting, there was public comment that was concerned about the loss of the practice wall. And there was public comment, I take that back because it was, the restroom was being moved from where it is currently over to the, the entrance. So public comment at that meeting said, we don't want to lose the practice wall. And the Starlight Players said, we really need our restroom and concession building closer to the amphitheater. So that was changed. In lieu of that, we even eliminated the original restroom idea and are going with, because there is no infrastructure there, that would be more expensive. We decided to renovate the, the existing restroom. So what I was gonna attempt to do was to kind of point out the, the main parts of the, of the, the project and insert any questions. And then I know Siva is here because he's been looking into helping us with some of the roadblocks we're running into as far as accessibility. I think I mentioned that before, where we were going to make an effort to, to make the restroom accessible. You can see that's not accessible. The county was working with us and the county indicated that we need accessibility into the park as a whole. You need to focus on that. And then we started looking at the, the ramp idea, which we've run into some issues there. But in lieu of getting into a whole bunch of detail there, I thought we would, I could try to do my best to explain kind of the main parts of the, of the effort or as we see it, that has been going on through this process and see if that helps and answer any questions. In lieu of trying to break everything down and try to explain a potential $5 million project, maybe it's, we have other options and we haven't really got into that part. So here's the restroom building that we have chosen to renovate. The main thing that we would like to do here, what we're proposing is moving, you could see the, the concession window there on the inside of the breezeway. We're proposing to move that to the other side to help out the Starlight Players and enclose that breezeway and make a third restroom. You probably know that, you may or may not know that, that, you know, it's a heavily used restroom, but there's not a ton of days where there's big lines, but there's enough, you know, every concert, of course, Worth of July. And it would, it would certainly ease some of the, the burden and the issues if we had an additional stall. We're gonna add a, we'd like to add a drinking fountain and a bottle filler to the, to the wall on the outside and then determine the best way to make it accessible. That could be done on its own. And that's kind of the direction we were heading before we ran into the, the accessibility for the park issue. One of the original things to, was focused on was to try to rehabilitate the gazebo. And you probably know that the gazebo is not only used as kind of a makeshift stage, right? For all these years, for the concert, a performance area. It's also a reservable picnic area and it's also on its last leg. So we've done some ways to, tried to, to kind of keep it moving forward. But the idea here, and this is one of the big, I forgot how to, can I go back? Where we talked about, and I didn't, I didn't, I do have the conceptual design available, but we can look at it if needed. But the idea there was to replace the gazebo with a more modern, flexible, effective performance venue, like a band shell or a, or an amphitheater. That could be utilized for sure for the concert, it could be utilized for the movies and it would certainly present itself for many other uses. With that, however, then you, we would, we would feel we would want to replace the reservable picnic area aspect of it. And that would happen in converting the, the older kids playground, which is adjacent to the gazebo. And in the picture on the right, you could see a further back area to the, there's the larger kids, older kids play area. And then to the left, there's a little bit of an open space with a few existing picnic tables. But the idea on the conceptual design would be to eliminate the, the older kids play area because it's going to be put into the overall play area on the other side of the meadow. Could sit that later. And then that would become a more flexible, slightly larger reservable picnic area, which is extremely popular in a, in a reservation basis all through the spring, summer and fall. And this would present more options. You could have a kind of a, maybe a multiple smaller reservable areas with the barbecues and they could, or they could be rented as one larger area. The gazebo is obviously small. It does have a few amenities with the, with the picnic tables and the barbecue, but it's, it's obviously a amenity that the community would really like to have more options with. And then moving to the, you all familiar with the, the, what's really not a younger kids play area because it's kind of a hodgepodge of, and you all know this sandbox and some of the younger kids apparatus, but then you move down, there's the tire swing, which is obviously not a younger kid thing, very popular amenity, and the other swings. And the conceptual design shows moving both, all the ages ranges onto that side of the park and encompassing it for all ages and potentially, and we've talked about, and I believe it was part of the original concept too, was to include elements or make the entire park an inclusive, the, the terms have changed over the years, all abilities inclusive, but an inclusive playground that has amenities for, for all members of the community. Inclusive doesn't necessarily mean every user, every child can use every piece of equipment. It means that all different kids of all abilities can use the same facility side by side in one way or another. So, so those are kind of the, there's another quick shot of it. The, the other thing I'd kind of mentioned was, or wanted to throw in, that's kind of a more minor aspect of the, those, those earlier things I mentioned was a, the conceptual design does show like a, a small exercise area. You've seen those, the, the apparatus that are in the, you know, adhere to the ground, they use your body weight, different things to kind of move around. And it's, we've heard comments that that would be nice to have either as a, we get a lot of people who just walk the path and, and for exercise, obviously tennis and pickleball, but an opportunity to use that space there and you'll see that, you saw that back in the conceptual design that that area was, was initially dedicated or booked for, for that type of activity. Now, I think, I'm kind of at a point now where I would ask if there's any clarifications or, or questions, but it's one of those projects too that if you, and we're, and Siva and Scott and the city manager as well have been trying to figure out what's the best way, and the, and the consultant calendar, you know, what's better to phase this? If we don't, you know, it is, would be still, you know, no matter how you slice it, gonna be relatively expensive to do all at once. But how do you divvy it up into phases? Once we solve the accessibility matter, which we're, we're looking at different options on, so. Because it gets down to, you know, if you're gonna do these things, you're gonna, the lawn's gonna be messed up, the irrigation's gonna be messed up, the pathways are gonna be impacted and we'll have to, to do all those, those fixes as well. I'm gonna stop there and, and see what kind of questions or comments there might be. So we're really talking about, you know, just a handful of, of things. You know, moving the two play areas into one larger one, removing the gazebo, replacing it with a more modern, flexible, effective performance area and then creating a more usable, modern, effective reservable picnic area. That's the main, those are mainly the main three ones. And then, of course, we're gonna renovate the restroom.
Any, any, thank you, Director Trimple. Any questions? I have comments, but I don't know if anyone has questions first.
Sure, sure.
Okay, Councilmember G. Go ahead.
Okay, so my question is about the ADA component. I know we talked about it in the past. If we go to upgrade the restroom and we, and we touch it, then we're required to update it to ADA standards. Is that a correct assumption?
Yes, and we had the county out actually on site to look at that. But the more they looked at it, they said, yes, the restroom needs to be accessible. But as she looked at all the entrances, we determined, we weren't surprised, the entire park is not compliant.
Okay.
And I understand that, but the question I have there is why, why do we have to, isn't it grandfathered? Why, why would we have to change it, so to speak? And then all the time I've been on the council, I don't remember us ever getting like significant complaints. I mean, I think having it be accessible is wonderful, but I don't ever remember it being a huge issue with the community that it's not that accessible. So I'm, I'm just curious as to, you know, is this a, is the, besides the restroom building itself, is the rest of it a nice to have or is it really truly a requirement?
I know our city manager, I saw, had a, did you have a comment?
Well, I would just say generally, the city's supposed to always have ADA compliant facilities. The trigger for when improvements would be necessary is when you touch the facility. But that doesn't mean that somebody couldn't make an argument today that they're not accessible and that's a problem potentially for the city. I think what prompted the, the focus on ADA was really, we were trying to touch the bathrooms and then the county came out and said, well, you've got a larger issue here that needs to get addressed, which is this entire facility is not accessible at this point in time.
And so I guess my question is, is how does the staff or our city attorney, you know, evaluate the risk of that? It's a risk, somebody could sue us and say, your park's not accessible, but.
Correct. We do, I believe, have a transition plan that was prepared for the city by an ADA consultant where all of our facilities were inventoried and all of the necessary improvements were listed out. And we have been, as resources allow, going through and addressing them. And I'm pretty confident the bathroom is on that transition plan.
The, all the entrances, the three entrances to the park are all on that.
Right. So the plan helps us prioritize which things to do first. And then certainly, when you go and make an improvement to a facility, then you absolutely have to put that at the top of the list.
It, it's almost like, and I don't know how far I want to get into it because we proceeded with, okay, we're gonna do the, the accessible plan that's in the conceptual design, the switchback ramp at the existing stairs, right? Kind of in the middle of Arinda Way. Let's do it. We, we determined that the funding, the grant funding that we got from Prop 68, we'd cut, would be, we'd be allowed to use that funding because we did identify accessibility as one of the items for, to be used for. So we were, we had, we amended calendar's contract, they designed the ramp. And then it's almost like we couldn't win. When, when it got, when you do a ramp there, an accessibility ramp there on Arinda Way, it's kind of the, the other one I had, kind of highlighted it. I'm sorry, mayor.
No, I was just gonna say, just in the interest of time, if we could, so we, we did the ramp already. I know, because I've walked down it. What are the other, what are the other priority accessible?
Yeah, we haven't done.
ADA compliant.
We haven't done it. We haven't. Haven't done the ramp. The ramp that I think you're referring to, that goes down by the tennis courts and down toward, that's not compliant. That's, was put in years ago, it's too narrow and it's too steep. The stairway there at the Arinda Way crosswalk is a staircase, so it's not compliant. And then the entrance that, most people, you probably know, enter from the drive, what I would call the driveway, right? That goes up behind the building. That's, that's not compliant either, it's, it's too steep. So calendar looked at rectifying those different areas, what it would take to, to add, you know, ramps and decking and ramps and rails and stuff, determined that the, the switchback ramp at the middle there that's highlighted would be the most cost effective. We went through it, we got all the way to the design and then as part of the design, you have to have an ADA parking space. And you know that that's angled parking there on that side of Arinda Way. And, and Siva could talk more to this and, and, and I know, because he's been heavily involved in it. But there's a, there's a valley gutter that runs down that prevents the ADA parking space from being compliant because of depth. And they, we went around and around with the county and that wasn't gonna be an, an option to change. Calendar came back with replacing three of the angled parking spaces with one parallel space, which would be compliant, but we had concerns about that type and the safety and different things. So we moved on and we're looking at some other options. It's just new. The city manager's just recently seen some ideas that engineer the engineering staff are working on. So we're confident we can.
I just want to make sure because I want to make sure we since we do we have other questions?
Yes.
Okay. Can you?
I know this is confusing.
Well, we're trying to get a general idea. We're trying to refresh our record or understanding what this is about. So if you could put dollar numbers on those three big changes or big, you know.
Compliance with the compliance issues.
No, 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 the moving the two
to get playgrounds together.
Building out the band stage. What was the third one?
The restroom renovation, which is not the big, but then the picnic area, the reservable picnic area, right?
Is that considered the third one?
Yeah, it was the the big playground.
So putting dollar signs on it.
Yeah, yes. I mean, they are budgeted out.
Like, how does that add up to five million?
Right, that's that's the confusing part. Individually, they're they're not as much. And I apologize, I didn't bring the whole breakdown budget. If I remember right, the line item that Calendar had for the playground was like $400,000. The picnic area is less, the restroom renovation is relatively low and even the the band shelf, they're bringing it down to a you know, grade level, probably a prefab type of facility. But it's more of the impact of of all the other things. You know, replacing the the pathways that are going to be damaged, if they need to be widened, if they need to be converted from asphalt to concrete. Things that kind of add up. And that's kind of what we were talking about. Maybe we need to take another look at this, look at these different projects individually and seeing if we can do that more on a a less extensive, more economical method, once we solve the accessibility.
Yeah, especially if you burn out all the money on this accessibility issues.
Yeah, it, you know, it, right. And that's something. Our biggest concern still remains, as you know, that that's and it's probably the most popular entrance because it is a driveway, you know, there's a lot of strollers, as you know, that go up there, so they can't use the staircase that's there now. Our concern is that it's still an active delivery route. It's a a city vehicle access. So to to separate vehicles from pedestrians and park users, and those are things that Siva and his his staff have have looked at some different options in the meantime, very recently. So we haven't even had a chance to to pass those on yet, but I just wanted to make my goal was to try to make it a little more clear with the actual amenities that were and features that were, you know, the primary ones that are being addressed.
Nice, Mayor.
If the first domino of changing the gazebo into a band shell doesn't get tapped, if you just fix the gazebo, could you avoid all the other stuff and just deal with kind of the ADA and restroom things that are going to be required of us at some point? Like, do all of the amenity upgrades follow in sequence from that one decision?
Um, that's a good question. And yes and no, it's it's there's certainly the relationship between the gazebo and the performance space and the reservable picnic area are just in our opinion, just too too intertwined. They just they're not, they can't continue to function like like they are. I think that could still be held separately. I think the most, you know, we believe that probably the most what the community is most interested is is in the upgrade of the of the play structures and the combining of the of the of both play areas together. You know, parents and nannies don't like to run back and forth across the lawn. And they also want some way. The biggest feedback we get is, you know, when you put the both play areas together and it's extended, please make sure it's it's confined, or you know, that's why we're always chasing parents and kids off the tennis courts because they can let them in there and shut the gate, you know. It we understand, you know, so that kind of those kind of things I think could be, you know, because it is, it is a puzzle piece to try to figure out. Hey, if if we're going to close down that play area to 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 upgrade it, well, maybe we keep that larger, the older kids playground open to at least accommodate some people at that time, then you finish the the play area. I'm just being hypothetical. Then you could attack that side of the the park, so to speak. The restroom renovation could could occur kind of standalone, but the gazebo and the removal of the larger kids play area in conversion to the group picnic area would kind of go hand in hand.
Okay.
The way we see it.
Councilmember G.
Yeah, um, thank you, Todd. Is somewhere in there, do we have a a listing of what is needed for maintenance? And where these facilities are in terms of, you know, are they falling apart? Like, you've implied the gazebo is falling apart. I mean, it would be nice to understand what the priority is in terms of it needs to be addressed because it's it needs to be maintained or it's falling apart versus are we trying to do something that's an improvement for the community? That that's where I'm starting to get a little bit confused in terms of, you know, are we is everything being addressed because things are literally falling apart? Or is some of it because it doesn't have?
I think we I think it's safe to say that all those four existing main elements are have have certainly reached their their end of their useful life. They're they're still functioning. We're doing regular evaluations and and maintenance very regularly. We just had our annual playground inspection for all the playgrounds that we have. You know, I want a pine grove and a couple at Wilder, maybe a half a page of issues, but we spend all the time on on dealing with these and they're not things that are, you know, you would maybe look at and and say they're life threatening or or you know, need to be closed down, but but I don't know how else to other other way to say it, but it's it's certainly time to have those those amenities replaced. They're all very popular, so that's the the challenge. But, you know, in some in some ways, by different factors of the community and for different purposes. So I think we could probably come up with a way to to prioritize and appropriately, you know, find an appropriate order, but that's something I think we could do. It's once we can solve the the underlying challenge of accessibility.
So if we we're still in questions, do we have more questions or otherwise I want to open for public comment and we we will still have discussion and feedback.
Questions about accessibility because I know with the schools, then you have to make the playgrounds accessible, you have to make the bathrooms accessible, you have to make all the paths accessible, all the paths of travel accessible. And the minute you start doing anything, you have to do all of that. Is it the same at the city? So?
Yes, but the good thing, once you, once you, and I think Siva can attest to this too, one we've we've been looking at it more recently and really look at the different options. Once once you get in there, up to there, it's it's that's not as much of an issue. The pathways are all pretty level. You've probably seen most of your kids learn to ride their bikes on that path because it's the only level piece of property we have. So once, once you we can get and you really only need one or two accessible parking spaces and stuff and an access point. What it's not as that's the main issue. Once we get in the pathways, you know, if we decide to widen them, they don't need to really be leveled or the rest of the park is is fine. Once you get, once you can get up and into it, then the accessibility is.
So you don't have to make the playground accessible too, because that's a big issue at the schools.
No, no, absolutely. For things like you know, compliant surfacing and things like that.
Like removing the tan bark and putting down that.
Whatever that may be, right.
Right.
But but being but once you get into the park, the accessibility, the accessible path to the the playground is not an issue. It's not like there's stairs or or hills or slopes or anything like that.
I understand that, but I it seems like once you start, then you would still have, you can't just do part of it. You'd have to actually replace all the tan bark with the rubberized matting and make the playground area accessible.
A portion of it, right.
Right.
And there's other compliance surfacing you could utilize too, but
Right.
Yeah, we it's not that that play area would we would think would be not a a piecemeal thing. That would be
All at once.
I'll start over, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, Siva has some good.
So just wanted to add a couple of things on the ADA side of it. So just to reiterate, what we have understood is that it became a bigger issue as like where we had to take a step back and not look so much as making individual elements of it ADA come accessible, but primarily the park first needs to have ADA accessible. So that's that's the level one, so to speak. Typically, anytime you touch a building or make improvements to a building, it triggers ADA requirements. Now, it does get a little tricky because there are slightly different criteria for like a pathway, let's just say sidewalk in the grades that they meet. In this case, I believe staff's thought is to approach, you know, the existing path that's within the park to remain as a pathway. So it allows us a little bit more flexibility in that. But to address the question particular to the play area, yes, if we touch that, that particular segment or entire play area space needs to be ADA accessible. Now, that doesn't mean we have to also like reconstruct the whole path and etc. So it's like different components of it. Discussions with the county has resulted in them saying like, you guys should start with square one first. Get the park ADA accessible before you do other things. But there are smaller elements we should be able to do without triggering ADA. I don't know where the gazebo falls, but it's typically not a considered a building structure. So we will definitely look into it. To answer the ADA question itself, we did receive a grant originally to do the restroom and that money is getting redirected to the ADA design. And like Todd mentioned, the switchback ramp design, although the design was feasible, the parking space along Arinda Way is not long enough. ADA requires 18 feet long spaces and this only has 15 feet. It's not uncommon. There are areas that have been approved, but unfortunately, our county has slightly different requirements and they they would rather us look at different alternatives. So currently, staff's looking at making the area next to the kindergarten gym become an accessible spot because there is a minimum requirement for it. We feel like that will be a good design outcome, but that'll be adjusted individually later. There was I heard a question about the estimate where the five million is. I did have a breakdown from the, sorry, I had to pull it up in my phone here. The ADA ramp component is about $250,000 estimated. The play area, the entirety of it, including all ADA equipment, all new equipment, it's 1.65 million. The restroom is 400,000. And then the bandstand, it's a million dollars. So I don't know. I think that includes all the elements in that area. So it's not just the bandstand. It's like the gazebo and everything, I believe. And then the rest of the park, they estimated 1.5 million dollars. Adds up to five million dollars.
What's the rest of the park?
The face concept, you don't have.
Oh.
There is a phase, like a conceptual design that the council approved previously. That five million includes everything that's in the concept.
Okay.
I have no.
Thank you.
Pathways, irrigation, turf.
Landscaping, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, can I open? Then I'm going to open for public comment. Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none and having no cards, I will close public comment and bring this back to the council for discussion and feedback. It's what we're being asked for. Who wants to go first? I have ideas, but I'm happy to.
All right, fine.
Okay.
Or do you want me?
Am I the only person who doesn't see five dot five million dollars of benefit here? Like this, that is a crazy number and it's
I agree.
A park that we've been using with our kids since they were in diapers and it's the same functionality. I mean, it's okay, you get the rubber surface or you, I mean, and it'll be pretty and spiffy, but a slide and a little fork thing and the I just there's nothing different. And I mean, it's to your point about how it's repairs and maintenance, it's not a fundamental improvement to the park. It's so hard for me to swallow that price tag without the economic development dollars bringing in some new money source to pay for it. And I'm just agog with the choice set that is being put before us tonight because it's a terrible choice set.
That's that's what I got.
City manager, do I? I wasn't here when this was obviously put together and I think one of the sort of objectives of having this sort of big plan is that we could then go out and seek grant funding for, you know, a complete remodeling of this park facility. I think what I would think would happen is that we would be able to probably get grant funding for components of the park that would be new or different or unique. Right? So if we were trying to consolidate the playground area and the playground is a fairly large ticket item in this. But if we were looking to consolidate it and we were looking to make it all inclusive in some respects, we could probably look around for grant money to do that. So I think that's part of this discussion is is there an interest in us sort of revisiting this, revisiting some of the sort of underlying things that we thought about 2018? And deciding whether or not we still want to go down that path or we want to look at ways and the ADA solution that we might come up with might not be very expensive at all. We have to just double check that, right? I mean, if we ended up putting something up near the kindergarten classroom, it might not be what we had originally budgeted or I mean, I think the playground is going to be a fairly sizable ticket item, but we could start maybe looking at ways to bring down the overall cost of the, you know, 2018 plan, which is what we're basing these estimates off of now. And, you know, tell you what we think is a grant eligible type of improvement to the park as we're sort of phasing this in so that it's not it's it's tough to swallow a five million dollar item. And when I saw that, I sort of had a moment as well, like there's what's ultimately going to be different about this park for five million dollars? That's going to be meaningful. But I think if 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 there is an interest in seeing those those playgrounds get consolidated for logistics reasons, for opening up areas for other activities, that could be a something we could probably pursue from a grant perspective and we could talk more with our grant consultant about that, about how feasible that might be. But there's typically a lot of park money out there, especially for things that are more inclusive. And so we could we could look that direction. So I just wanted to to I was reacting to the vice mayor's comments. And I don't think we necessarily disagree. I think what we're trying to figure out is how do we bring down some of those costs, especially around the ADA matters and try to move forward. I think probably we'll come up with some solutions for the restroom that might be less costly as well. We're finding that out now as we're looking at doing some remodeling of Arinda Oaks Park instead of replacing the restroom there that we're bringing down costs. So we'll we'll continue to look at ways to bring down costs for some of these elements, but I just I know that there was some interest in sort of hearing more about the big plan because it hadn't really been presented back to this council, this five member council and the four before in great detail. So we wanted to sort of give you the foundation that this is a big ticket item. You're going to hear about it and you're going to say, what are you talking about? What are we getting for five million dollars? So that's that's why we brought it up before we started talking about the CIP.
Comments?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I think the accessibility issues are really important to address as soon as possible, frankly. I'm sort of amazed that we've gotten away with it this long as a city not having park be in compliance. I think the all inclusive playground is really important to achieve and I think combining the playground so people aren't trying to watch their children in two locations is probably a safety issue that we we really do need to address and would be an improvement to the park. I love the idea of the bandstand and 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 revamping that area. To me, it's less important than dealing with the playground and the accessibility issues, but I think I think the idea of getting grant funding and and maybe doing it a chunk at a time is good.
That's others. Councilmember G.
I I mean, I agree. That's how I'd like to see it laid out. I'd like to see it staged and staged according to priority based on, you know, either what's falling apart the fastest or what we can get, you know, it could it could be staged a lot of different ways. It could be what money is available, what money might really be available to us. I I don't, the five million dollar price tag, I think, is tough to swallow, but what I really see it as is it's it's a staged five million dollars worth of needed maintenance over a long period, a longer period of time. of needed maintenance over a long period, a longer period of time. I don't think we're getting anything all that super exciting for it, but it needs to be maintained. It's well-used, it's well-loved. And, you know, I, I guess I hadn't given a whole lot of thought to how long we have gotten away with it not being all that accessible by law. So that's a little concerning too. So to me, it's a matter of, of prioritizing it and phasing it and staging it so that we can understand what the priorities are. Like if the gazebo is about to fall down next year, then that might change the priority. But that's, that's what I think would be really helpful.
Councilmember Riley, do you want?
I agree because we don't have the funds to do the whole thing at this point. We want to stage it and we want to do the ADA projects first. I guess the only point that has been made is the thought of finding nonprofit money, not just grant money, but raising funds in Orinda. Even though we don't have the Parks Foundation anymore, there may be other bodies that would be rally, would rally around this. This is, it would be important to a lot of families who use the park. Probably could get, you know, when you give money, you like to see where your money's going. And this would be a concrete thing and you could probably, you know, put a, put a name on a tire swing or a name on a fort, anyway, you know? I think we can think outside the box and raise a little money, hundred thousand or something. Or maybe million. Go ahead.
Going to talk to the scouts in the audience that I know they're always looking for Eagle Scout projects. So talk to the city manager for every Eagle Scout project. Call Todd or call city manager first.
Great point. I, I just want to add a couple of things. I, in order to give good, like to give a sense of priorities, aside from the, my priority would be the ADA compliance and making sure we use all the grant funding that we have received or community funding that we have received in a timely manner. Because that hasn't always been the case and I want, that's, that's, I can't emphasize that enough. Beyond that, I love the idea of fundraising and selling, you know, the schools do it. There's a tile somewhere, a brick somewhere at Delaware with my family's name on it. Like we've all, we do that at every school, we do that at, so, you know, but I think there's limits to how much that raises, but I think it's a great idea. But in terms of prioritizing these other projects, I mean, I walked through the park, you know, on Sunday when I saw this on the agenda, just because I used to live there and now I am not there that often. And I think it all looks pretty good, except for frankly, the gazebo, which looked really dowdy to me. But, but I thought it all looked pretty good. And, you know, I remember how frustrating it was to have your, you know, older kids and younger kids wanting to go to two separate playgrounds. But that is to me a, a big want, not a need. And, you know, at a cost of one point six five mil to combine them, that's like a lot of money, right? We, we're not, we don't have five million dollars. So I am all in favor of pursuing this bit by bit grant wise, but my priorities are, you know, what I've said in the ADA compliance. But the other stuff I think looks pretty good. And I can't prioritize without knowing, like, again, this is to, I think councilmember G asked about life longevity condition of the amenities, right? And costs of replacement of the amenities and variations of that, right? There's, there's one thing to take the gazebo down and put in a bandstand and redo the picnic area and move it to another area and then redo the path. But that's, that's like everything, dream, right? So like, what is the dream cost? And then what is the minimal cost? What, you know, if something just needs to be fixed, can't we do stuff? You know, like, do we, it would be great to have an additional bathroom, but do we really need that given the cost, right? And where is that on a priority list? Maybe we can just put in a water bottle filling station somewhere, you know? So I think there's small upgrades and I'd like to hear about that. But I can't give you priorities beyond that without money, funds attached to it, so.
If I can throw out another analogy, the amenities at the Lafayette Reservoir are resonating with a lot of the things, you know? They've got a ground level bench, they've got a large picnic area, they've got a really cool little kid enclosed play area. But those are fairly humble, simple, long-lasting amenities. And then when you go to Walnut Creek to Heather Farms Park, it's a complex. It's the newest, greatest, it's fully accessible, it's got all the bells and whistles. And so, you know, if you ask a consultant, if I'm doing a brand-new park, what do I want? I think what we're going for here is more the Lafayette Reservoir package than the Heather Farms package. And maybe that'll.
And both those towns still have all the restaurants where we all go out to dinner and they have a bickering tax base, but anyway, I just have to say that.
I think we're just looking for some general feedback and we'll spend more time talking about this internally and then we'll be back to you in the course of the next several months.
Yes. One question because it is going to affect the CIP conversation. The pickleball question, which we've gone around and around about, has been substantially addressed with restriping to create additional court flexibility and we got that court reservation system in. Before we get to that other matter, is there anything that you would like to comment on about the supply and demand of pickleball as an amenity?
You're right. We just, we just recently completed the resurface of Court One from two pickleball courts to four. I haven't heard much initially, actually, the first day. There was some, a little bit of, some questions about, because it certainly is putting the limits on the extra space around the courts when you're doubling the number in a, in a standard-sized tennis court. But I haven't heard much. I mean, they, they kind of say, hey, we're happy to get these extra courts, we're going to deal with it. But we're still dealing with a sharing scenario. So it's, it's, it's difficult to, to really compare. We firmly believe that dedicated courts at that park would not be the best thing because two hours once a day versus fourteen hours a day makes a big difference with. And I frankly haven't got a lot of complaints, but, you know, the housing is within a hundred, within a hundred feet of the courts and I think we'd be dealing with problems. I don't know, are you asking if what we've done here recently is, kind of would appease the need for a while? I would say so, but I, I wouldn't call it a permanent solution, I'm afraid.
Okay, I think we've given a lot of feedback.
Yep, we've taken some notes and we'll, we'll be back when we're, we've got a better sense of how to approach this project.
Thank you. So let's move on to agenda item H five, which is the proposed update to the capital improvement plan for fiscal years, I guess, twenty-five through thirty.
All right. Good evening, madam mayor and councilmembers. I'm here again tonight to get the CIP update process kickstarted. Put together a small presentation. So this will be the CIP update for fiscal year, technically twenty-five, twenty-six through twenty-nine, thirty. I'll go into detail why it's listed as twenty-four through twenty-five to twenty-nine, thirty in a second. So the capital improvement plan or CIP identifies public infrastructure projects and funding sources for long-term investments that are designed to protect, preserve, and enhance the city's infrastructure, extend the useful service life of public facilities and improve or enhance delivery of city services. Infrastructure, primarily, we are talking about transportation, drainage, parks and city buildings. A comprehensive five-year CIP is being prepared and presented to the city council every two years, consistent with the two-year city's operating budget cycle. And the CIP typically covers the estimated activity during an overall six-year period, which is basically the year that we are adopting the CIP, which is for us right now is twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. And then the five years forward-looking from this point, starting twenty-five, twenty-six through twenty-nine, thirty. Changes to current projects or new or proposed projects noted in the staff report have not yet been incorporated into the software that we use to update the CIP. So what was, what's being presented to you is in the draft version and then depending on the feedback, we will make those changes and bring it back to you at a later rate. The, yeah, all right. I guess that's what I wanted to say about that. Before we jump to into the details, just a quick milestone calendar, I wanted to present this. Like today is our first meeting, so it's the preliminary review. And then once we get the feedback, we will update the actual CIP document and bring it back to you. Our plan is to bring it back to you on May sixth. And then that report will also be shared with the SSTOC meeting because those projects that are funded by Mesher are, they will get an opportunity to review that. And then in line with our general plan requirements, we will take the report for planning commission review on May twenty-seventh and then bring the final CIP for city council adoption on June third. So starting with the projects that were completed and closed out during this current fiscal year. As you can see, there are a few listed here. The first project in particular is something that staff's actually a little bit relieved that we finally got to it. It's one of the projects that's been in our books for many, many years, from what I understand. So finally, we were able to get the federal funding for it and complete and close up the project. So and I have a few pictures in the following slides to show some of the projects. But in the interest of time, I'll keep moving. But if there's any specific question, please feel free to stop me. The San Pablo Creek Culver project was a good, another large project that we were able to complete this year. This was a, I would call it a tremendous success, actually. We had a great contractor, good construction management company and the project. I mean, I wouldn't call it flawless, but you know, for what the engineering team can take, it went very well. And we even got an award for this. And we also recently completed some pathway improvements on the Camino Pablo pathway. This basically runs from Orinda Way all the way to Wagner Ranch High School. A portion of this was rehabilitated. City received some TDA funds, Transportation Development Act funds, and that was used to improve the path. And some of the pictures you're seeing is when it was during construction, while it was in construction. This one's a small retaining wall along Camino Sobrante. The wall was showing signs of failure and it increased quite a bit when we had the recent storms a couple of years ago. So following that, staff reviewed and we had to make some, reconstruct the wall, basically. So these are the pictures of reconstruction activity going on. So the wall was replaced with what we call a soldier pile wall. Some of the projects that are currently underway, these are either about to get into construction or plan to be built by the end of the year. As you can see here, we have the library HVAC controls project. A few of the facility maintenance projects, the painting, city hall, library and community center paintings. The annual paving project, which the council just approved in tonight's consent calendar, that will get started construction this summer. And then we also have a storm drain pipe-busting project on minor. The pathway projects, these two are actually grant-funded. They're not going to be constructed this year, but the design is underway this year. So the goal is to get them constructed. My estimate would be next summer. Staff is proposing some changes to existing projects that are already in the, listed in the CIP. So the first one, the road safety plan project. This is a project we originally set up to do the city's local road safety plan. And city successfully adopted the plan back in 2023. And the LRSP identified a few safety projects throughout the city. And last year, we applied for the HCSIP grant, which is Highway Safety Improvement Program grant funding. And Orinda was actually one of the cities which got awarded all the projects we applied for. So we are very excited about that. We received about one point one million dollars in federal funding. And so this project was updated to reflect that and also to reflect the fact that that funding comes with a matching requirement, which adds up to about three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Capital Improvement Fund seven hundred will provide for that. Glorietta Race Crosswalks, again, we have gotten word that the TDA grant for this year will allocate two hundred thousand dollars in support of this project. And the project requires an additional hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which staff's recommending that it come from Capital Improvement Program. The Wilder Multi-Use Path, it's currently, this is one of the projects that was originally identified in the Bike Trails and Walkways Master Plan. And then it is also a project that is identified in our La Morinda Action Plan, one of the two major projects for us. One is this, another one is the Muraga Way pathway study. Last year, we were able to secure some forty thousand dollar funding from the MTC, which allowed us to do a technical study on the project. They looked at a couple of alignments that would potentially be feasible and also give us a cost. And the cost for this project is expected to be about twenty-one million dollars. So staff is requesting the council consider appropriating five hundred thousand dollars from Fund seven hundred to do some preliminary work, which will position us. The magnitude of the project requires it to do some preliminary legwork, which will also allow us to go after larger grants, which will eventually, eventually support us build this project. So that's what that's being presented. Some proposed new projects, these are our typical recurring projects. As you can see, the top two are the annual paving projects. Because this is a two-year cycle CIP, we're adding the two years at the end of where we stopped it last year. The same for the annual storm drain. This is the category B project. The category A projects are handled as separate CIP projects. These are the, I want to say almost twenty million dollars worth of work that we are trying to chip away slowly every year. So we add a project annually last, I think it was three fifty and this year we are proposing four hundred thousand dollars a year. Some more proposed new projects, these are, as noted here, funding secured or identified. So the first couple of them, city teamed up with CCTA last year to go after some grant funding. And we were awarded the SS4A grant, which is Safe Streets For All. That's going to allow us to do those two projects and staff will be working with CCTA to try to implement these. So we added those into the CIP. And then the park landslide, this again, is a result of the severe storms we had a few years back. We were able to get some FEMA funding or we are waiting for the final authorization on it. Once that comes through, we should be able to get that moving. And Glorietta pavement, they prepare, that is a identified need. And staff is proposing using the Roads and Rainage Stabilization Fund, which we feel is appropriate to help repair that issue we are having just south of the intersection of Glorietta and Muraga Way. And then the community center HVAC replacement and the synthetic turf, they are scheduled projects that's coming from related fundings. And there is funding available for those, that's why they are listed here. Another project that we do not have funding for is the Muraga Way widening pathway study. And we, this is, the, the five hundred thousand dollar value is coming from a recent partnership effort we had with the town of Muraga. And through CCTA's help, we went after a grant that was estimated to be one point one million dollars something, and that was going to be split. And that was going to be split between the town of Muraga and to the Orinda. So we expect we will need something to that extent to get a feasibility understanding of it. But this will be a grant funded project, so the development of this project will be based on what kind of grant fundings we're going to be receiving in future. All right, a few points to take note. The staff report includes a couple of attachments and attachment A, just for clarification. It provides the detailed pages of the current C I P that was approved last June in twenty twenty four. And the projects that were budgeted to have expenditures in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five, but had little or none, were listed in the staff report along with the reasons for the delay, which is a separate section. And then projects that are on schedule and within the established budget, but not included in the staff report. We figure they are on, as running as expected. And then attachment B includes the unfunded projects list. And at this time, no changes are being proposed for that list. Lastly, certain considerations going to delivering projects to keep in mind is project prioritization. Resource availability plays a significant role in staff availability and delivering the projects within the timeframe. Funding availability for the projects and trying to schedule the projects within the primary two years and then over the five-year timeframe.
Great, thank you.
All right, just one last thing before I close out. Based on the direction and feedback that we're going to get today, staff, like I mentioned, will bring back the updated draft C I P for your review on the May sixth meeting. And that will give you more, the actual budget numbers associated with the discussion tonight. And we will be able to identify budget availability or lack of monies for certain funds. With that, thank you. I'm available to answer any questions.
Questions? I do want to tell everyone it is nine fifty-two, so we will need to extend our meeting at some point.
Any questions?
Okay. Do we want to make a motion to extend the meeting right now so that we don't interrupt questions? It's nine fifty-two and we have another agenda item after this, so I would propose ten thirty. Go ahead.
I'd rather go slower and do chunks, smaller chunks, and see if we can reach our goals quicker that way instead of extending it till ten thirty.
Do you want to make a motion? Okay.
Please.
I'll second that. All in favor of to extend till ten fifteen?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Questions? Councilmember G?
Yeah, I have two questions, Seva. Thank you. My, my first question is about the raised crosswalks at Glorietta and Martha. I'm trying to understand the, now that we've gone to the crossing guard addition, I'm trying to understand what we're, I don't want to turn down fund grant money that's available, but was it, is it supposed to also be a traffic calming measure? What, and which, which sidewalk or which crosswalks is it? Is it across Glorietta and across Martha?
Yeah, so it's actually a raised intersection, so the whole intersection will be raised up.
And the objective?
And the crosswalks is going to be on the top. So it creates, increases safety tremendously for all the crossing students because they are going to be an elevated platform in line with the sidewalk, while the cars coming to the stop have to climb over and sit down to get across the intersection. So it was always repeated from a safety improvement standpoint primarily.
Okay, I guess I'm just, I'm trying to balance that with the idea of the crossing guards, right? Because isn't the safety about school kids, right? It's not about vehicle safety when you're not talking about the school kids, right?
In this case, yeah, the raised intersection is more for pedestrian safety than vehicle safety.
I guess I'm having a hard time understanding why we want to tackle that if we're paying for crossing guards, which seem like, so it's just a question. I'm not opposed to lovely raised crosswalks. They're very nice, but I'm just trying to understand that. The other thing I have a question about for staff is I completely understand to the nth degree why you need to do preliminary work on, you know, the Wilder to downtown path if you're going to try to position yourself to get other monies, et cetera. But the level of money is so gigantic that I find myself wondering what is the realistic probability of being able to find money? And therefore, is the trade off of doing the early work really worth it? Because if twenty one million dollars was the number I heard is anywhere in the ballpark, I can't imagine or fathom where we're ever going to come up with that. So I do have a little bit of a heartburn of, should we even spend a half a million dollars? Because it just seems like the return's impossible. So those are my two questions, so.
So I guess the question there is what is, is there any realistic possibility that we would ever get a grant to fund that twenty one million dollars before there's a five hundred thousand dollar investment in, in researching that? Given, given that we have attempted to get some grants before and been told that we're not an underserved community, right?
So I can share one experience we had about this particular trail. So we did go after a active transportation grant two years ago. And we didn't score too well, so we met with Caltrans team and M T C team, who actually reviewed the application to get an understanding of how we can improve our chances of securing funding. And one of the main things they were looking at is like, hey, you have an idea of a project, not truly a project. And to go from here to there, you guys have to start working on chipping away some of the preliminary steps. So initial step we took was to extend the conversation with M T C. And we were able to secure that forty thousand dollar grant, which they have a technical assistance program. So we utilized that to do the initial study. And that study has allowed us to, one, confirm that there is a potentially doable project. There's two alignments they looked at and they were able to cost it. Of course, they have also identified significant hurdles in achieving all that, but that comes with any large project. So, but it has told us that there is a feasible option for a project. Now, the cost is a concern. This appropriation requires us more to start looking at like, okay, you know, there are certain elements we can start doing. And that will also include like, you know, the same discussion questions you're all having is and is this a project that the neighborhood wants, that the community wants? And public outreach will be a big component of it. Those are all tasks we have to do, not only for our own reasons, but also the grant expectations are also like that. So eventually, if we are relying on a grant, there are some things we have to do. We don't have a real understanding of how much that's going to cost. There is also the element of adding match funds. So as you all saw tonight, some of the grants we received also had match funds that are in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. So this money will be used for that.
Other questions?
Wasn't the idea of that pathway to connect us, connect us, meaning, you know, older ended with Wilder?
Yes, that's correct.
And set us up for a connection with the Caltrans side across the way for affordable housing? That was?
This design does not right now look at that Caltrans site thing, but there is no direct connection. I should say, there is no direct pedestrian or bicycle access for Wilder to the downtown area, Wilder community. So they have to get on the freeway to get into the downtown area. Same like any other vehicle. I mean, there are emergency vehicle access routes that connects them on the backside through Brookside Road or all the way in the back. But there is no direct pedestrian access, so this project will provide that.
The one thing, I would just, a lot of people walk down Brookwood and then walk around down Muraga Way. There's an E V A road there.
It's, it, because I've always heard that it's an emergency access and you picture it being like a fire road, but it's paved.
It's paved.
Kids bike it to go to O I S and Miramonde. So I had the same question, that the idea that people would go down out of the residential community, out and along the freeway to get to downtown versus popping out through Brookwood? If there was a nice, you know, a connected way, are we solving the wrong problem, do you think?
No, no, no.
I just want to clarify, is that Brookwood Road you're referring to closer to downtown? Or is it Brookside closer to the nursery?
Behind the nursery, sorry.
Okay, so that is Brookside Drive.
Yes.
It is.
I misspoke.
Right, so this was, the discussion is about connecting that community towards the downtown services and things like that. So, yeah, I didn't mention like that, that is the E V A that people do use. And, but it is a closed facility. It is, you know, it's not legally there for that purpose. This path will be like a, similar to the Saint Stephen's Trail. It'll be a one that's running along the highway and connect the two communities.
Okay, questions?
Okay, another question on the unfunded list, the number ten, Highway twenty-four and Camino Pablo interchange landscape improvements. This is doing the landscaping, is the way I read it, after we cut through the median for an additional evacuation route?
Could you repeat that? I was trying to get the.
So I feel like this number ten on the unfunded is included in the existing improvement of the medians. Because it's my understanding, once we improve the medians, then we are going to, we cut through the medians, then we're going to improve them with landscaping. That I'm aware that there's some money sitting waiting for this. So I feel like ten is already real thing.
Where?
Ten on the unfunded.
Okay.
So it's page one seventy-two.
Yeah, I'll have to check if that's not something to do with the ramp access areas itself, because there have been discussions in the past about those being too, not like, not landscaped. I do not know if this refers to that area or the median landscape we are currently working on.
I know the answer. Because this, I assume in today's world would sink way far down the wish list, but this had nothing to do with the median change out. This had everything to do with, if you really look at that lower circle of the interchange there, how ugly, I mean.
Which lower change, interchange, Camino Pablo going to Wana Creek or Camino Pablo coming from Lafayette?
The piece where, okay, if you're getting off of twenty-four and heading into downtown, where that loop is, where the transmission tower is, right across the street from.
San Tomerio.
Yeah.
So not the median?
Not the median. It was about.
Never mind.
Once upon a time, the council was talking about how it looks a little better now, although it still looks ghastly in my opinion. But.
Okay.
But M O F D went in there and, and cut down a whole bunch of stuff. And then for a while, it was really ugly and now all kinds of stuff is growing back in it randomly. But it is, it is extraordinarily ugly compared to a lot of interchanges. And in our case, it's practically part of our downtown.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, sorry.
It had nothing to do with the median.
So, okay, there are questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
What is that mid-block crossing study? Where is that? It was something that where we need to allocate matching fund for something we've got a grant.
Mid-block. Right there, right there. Oh, yeah, what block is mid-block?
Microphone?
Could you please clarify what the mid-block crossing study is on this slide?
Yeah, so both the projects, actually, the, the speed limits study and the mid-block crossing study, like I mentioned, it's a, it's a partnership effort with C C T A. So they, along with the four other agencies. The study itself will look at the citywide. They'll, they'll assess all the major collectors, arterials, other neighborhoods where there is more pedestrian movement and provide us a report identifying areas that could benefit or would require like a mid-block crossing and other improvements to existing crossing, if there is any.
Okay, I'll save my comments for when we get to comments.
Okay. Other questions? I had, okay, go ahead.
Do, do the speed limit and mid-block studies, is it, are those fully funded? Or is there still going to require city money?
They do have a match requirement and I'm trying to remember, I believe they got little over one and a half million dollars for that. But again, it's shared by four or five different agencies, one of us, one of it is us. And this portion is for our use.
This is out of pocket?
I believe the match on that is, I want to say twenty percent?
I had a couple of questions. There were two items I was looking for and I didn't see them and maybe I just missed them. But one was the, the median changes for evacuation access. I did not see that. Is that anywhere on here? And then the other thing is, we talked about contraflow lanes on Muraga Way as well. And I didn't see that anywhere on here and I don't know if I missed it or if, because that's infrastructure, right?
So I can speak for the median project first. So that would fall under the category where I mentioned if it's currently active and it's progressing as expected. So we didn't specifically address those.
Okay.
So that project is under work right now. The plans are under review by Caltrans at this moment.
Okay, so that's, future funding is not needed to allocate to that because we've already allocated?
That'll be correct, yes.
Okay. And then what about contraflow on Muraga Way? I know, it's something that we've discussed, but I've never seen it in a C I P plan, I don't think.
I, I would need to look and talk to the team about how we've handled the contraflow previously and whether or not this is the right vehicle and we're going to do that.
And then I had one other question, which was that the Orinda Oaks Park landslide repairs. The, the backup in here talked about how it was through Cal, O E S and FEMA funding. And I just have to ask, are we in any jeopardy that that will not come through? Because that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and it was E V S, E V A access, right? So it is evacuation related?
It is a fire access road above where the landslide happened. And I do not know if this particular funding source got impacted by those recent decisions. What we, it's a very extended process that goes through FEMA. We have gone through all of that and I think it's at the last stage with Cal O E S, who's the one, put it simply, they're, they're the ones who want to cut the check for us. So we are pretty close to receiving that money.
Okay.
But yeah.
I think we might be like a letter away from submitting something into a port. That is with Cal O E S and it still comes through.
This has to be on the right letterhead, is what I learned today.
So those were my questions and then I have comments. Anyone else have questions? Okay, I'm going to open public forum on this item. And this is item H five. And seeing none, unless there's anyone who wants to speak on this item, I will close public forum and bring it back to the council for comments. Who wants to go first? I have comments, but happy to. Councilmember Hoxey, no? Councilmember G?
Well, I guess my earlier comment is I would want to take a thoughtful process as to whether we really want those raised crosswalks or not, if we're going to do the crossing guards. I, I don't quite understand the logic of both, so. And, and I guess maybe a little bit more thought into my other issue of, do we really, really want to do that? On a high note, Seva, just on a personal high note, I do have hopes that we could finish the park and the sign because I know how long the seismic retrofit of those bridges was. So the fact that we finished them is, is, is very hopeful, so. But, but overall, I don't think I have any other comments right now until I hear some more.
Does anybody, otherwise I can?
I've got, I've got a list, but you would just.
Okay. I, I am, I would, I want to see the Muraga Way bike pedestrian path that can be used as an E V A lane during evacuation prioritized. And I know that we're trying to get alternate funding for that. And I'm all about, you know, anything that we can do that we can get grant funding for, you know, including with, with a limited match is, I think, a priority, just because we can fund it, you know, through those, that grant funding. And I'm fully in favor of pushing as hard as we can. And I'm fully in favor of pushing as hard as we can to get alternate funding for it. But it is a much higher priority for me than, you know, if we're going to spend $500,000 on a study, my notes were, let's do that instead of the Wilder walkway. I really wonder if anybody will use that Wilder walkway. I hate to say that, but, I mean, if we can get funding, you know, to do something nicely, that, but, but it's a, it's a, it's a lot, right? And so I would want, before that $500,000 spent, I would want to know. And then my other, my other, you know, I'd like to see us look into, and maybe this isn't, CIP is not the vehicle for it, but contraflow on Maraga Way. Again, any of this stuff that we could get additional funding for. And I am concerned that the, you know, Arinda Oaks Park stuff is EVA access. And I think you raise a good, Councilmember G raises a good point with the crosswalks because maybe when this, this was secured or put in our CIP, we hadn't yet approved the crosswalks, crossing guards, rather. So those are my comments.
I, I concur with both of those comments. I had the same notes. A few other things, and again, you, you want feedback, so I'm just going to rapid fire. First of all, when you're talking about things like pathway projects, please put the location of crossings or pathway projects so that we can very easily see kind of the length of it or the location of it. Secondly, where there is a, this format tonight was unusual because it was kind of piecemeal. But if there's something like the community center master plan, things like that, if you can just make sure that it's all on one page, so we can see the spent and the to spend and really kind of try to make sure that things aren't piecemeal in the presented plan. Otherwise, I just, as notes, the community park master plan is going to need some updates. The Brookwood Road is obviously still an unsolved problem and isn't budget ready, so that needs to be addressed. The traffic calming, agree with the reserve you've set up, but it doesn't fund any projects. And I was concerned about this county thing where we, we've got to come up with this 20% match on speed limit and traffic studies and mid-block studies because we're, the way our roads lay out, I don't think we have a problem where our speed limits are too high or we have mid-block crossing problem. It felt like a solution looking for a problem. I think what we have are traffic calming backlog, things that we want to get done. But before we spend that money, I'd ask you guys to take a hard look at whether we really would benefit from that county money, even if it sounds like a good idea. Strongly agree with the Wilder versus Maraga Way feasibility money. And then of the things in your unfunded projects, I just wanted to note that the Dog Park and Pickleball were things that are going to stay unfunded until they prove a need. And so we need to stay on top of that. They're not merely unfunded, they need to be proven up. So I'm watching those and I want to make sure they don't just sort of die in, in committee. I also noticed that creek improvements and a lot of the Connect Arinda projects are out there, but they're unfunded. And I'd like to make sure that you guys are really keeping an eye on when those can and maybe should come forward in a more actionable way. So I, I know they're in the right place for now, but that's just a question back to y'all. That was it.
I think it's a really good list. I agree with what I've heard that we probably need to take another look at whether or not we want to head towards a $21 million improvement for a connection to Wilder. What's not here is, I agree that the evacuation thing is really important, it may not be here. But also what's not here is some ideas on how to get, be more business friendly, things that we can do to say, hey, here we are. And, and to me, there's this one, I think it's an unfunded project, that, I think it's called Vashel, that street, that little lane. I mean, that could be an opportunity. And I don't know if we want to bump that up as a priority over $21 million for Wilder. I don't know, because you, our city manager has a lot of experience and good ideas about how to, you know, push our economic development. And I'm not sure that was addressed in crafting this tonight. And I would love to see you put your stamp on a couple of ideas.
And before you answer that question, can we, I'm going to move that we extend the meeting till 10:30. We have a second? Hold on before you leave. We have to extend the meeting first. You have to vote on it. You have four. We have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor? Hi? Okay, she.
Amongst the.
That's true, that's a requirement.
The other comment I have, and I, and I can go back and double check, but I don't think it was part of the SSTOC report. But the other thing I think would be very helpful is to pull out and recap the drainage A projects, the drainage B projects. I mean, there's a lot in here and I, and I fully understand, you know, it was a step-by-step approach on both, but it would be nice to understand where we are on that, you know, the list of what we were trying to accomplish. I don't think it was in the SSTOC annual report. If it was, I apologize. But it would be nice to, because here it's a little hard to, you know, we're going project by project. It's 40,000 here, it's 200,000 here. It'd be nice to see the list again of kind of where we are. I know we're still a long way from, especially on the project or the group B projects, but it'd be nice if we could.
There was discussion in that report of all the group A and group B projects, because I remember.
All right.
But.
Maybe it's just in there and I can go back and look at it.
Yeah, so I, I can answer, on the group A, we have completed the two groups. We, so group A was split into three projects that had multiple pipes included. We call them group one, group two, group three. Group one and two are built already. Group two, the contractor had to take a break and come back this year to finish up some last minute, last few tasks. Group three is under design, going through permitting right now. It's expected to be going into construction next year. So that should address all the category A for us after.
That's great, because those were the highest priority ones.
And then category B, we have done two of the projects till now. And the next two are planned for getting as a joint combined project for the coming fiscal year. And then these will get.
Okay. And now, City Manager, would you like to?
So I, I just wanted to follow up on the comment that Councilmember Riley made, which I think was similar to the comments that Vice Mayor was making, which is the Connect Arinda projects that are related to kind of creating that, the revitalized areas, the physical infrastructure that could help to do that. So I'll talk to staff and we'll talk about how we could potentially, if that's the consensus of the council, that you would like to see us incorporate, actively incorporate it into the CIP for this five-year period. We could start looking at that and figuring out where the money would come from.
I'm interested in that, but one question I have around that is, I don't know what is more typical. Is that typically something that a city would provide resources on? Or that a city would, you know, ask in the context of redevelopment, would sort of partner or pursue upgrades or ask developers that are coming in to pursue upgrades?
Yeah, it's been, it's been a combination, right? In terms of community benefit to, you know, ask them to do it as part of a project because they're out there and they're doing work, if there's things that they could achieve. I think I'd need to take a look at the projects. I, after our strategic planning, I went through Connect Arinda and started looking at the projects themselves and saw the, the handful that were related to sort of economic vitality and creating that public infrastructure that helps to promote changes in the downtown. But we haven't talked about it relative to this five-year CIP because we were just started addressing that in the last few weeks. And this has been going on for quite some time.
Do we have more feedback or do you feel that you've gotten, you've gotten plenty of?
I just, I think, just to summarize, I haven't heard a lot of support for moving forward with the Wilder efforts. And so, and I, and that's fine and we can, we can just address that as part of the CP. The path will stay in the CIP. It was, it was addressed as part of the environmental document for the Wilder project. It will need to stay in the CIP. Whether or not we spend our efforts to try and advance it at this time, that's a council decision. And it sounds like at this point, that's not where we want to put our money. On the Maraga Way side, I would encourage that we do put it in the CIP so that we can, even if it's unfunded at this point, I mean, certainly you could look to Measure R to help fund that. If you wanted to look at your Measure R fund balance to put towards that, we could do that and we could talk about proposing that for you. And I think there's an eagerness on the town of Maraga's side to get going quickly. They obviously, in their position, they can, they have a lot more to work with from a design standpoint than, I mean, the challenges are really going to be on the Arinda side.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. In getting.
Most of it is in Arinda's.
I would love for something like that, for us to be able to do it, like matching funds from city, from, you know, for Arinda and Maraga together, can pony up for half of that? Then can we then try to get money from the state for the other half? Like, that to me is a huge priority.
I think we got to get this into the CIP book, talk about it, that we're socializing this as a project and that we want to start soliciting funding. And I think there's eagerness on the town of Maraga's part to move forward.
Right, I agree. And then on the Wilder thing, I mean, if, if, I just think it's somewhat absurd to think that we will get that grant, but maybe I'm just not, maybe I'm too pessimistic or cynical about it all now, but.
I mean, to date, we have only spent staff time, not any other specific dollar amounts. Whatever we have spent came from through funding from other agencies, so.
So then we can move on to item H6. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
You went in summarizing, what, what's your takeaway on the speed limit mid-block crossing study? How, what, what's the consensus from us on that?
I think, I didn't hear that you didn't want us to proceed with doing the analysis. The mid-block crossings are not related to the raised, is that including the raised?
No, they're, they're separate projects. We will, we will go back to a drawing board just to revisit, because it is a safety, like a more holistic safety view of highlighting all the hotspot areas within the city. So something like this, having this funding motivates us to kind of take a broader look at where are some of the hotspots around and then we can come up. It'll be more like a plan for us to implement down the line, not truly a project where we start making changes yet.
Okay. Are we basically on the line for that though, because we're involved with other cities? And, you know, that we've already divided it four ways or something? If we were to pull out, we'd be really ruffling some feathers?
So I mean, we, so we do have traffic calming requests, quite a bit comes through and many get passed through. And beyond that, we have other safety issues that come through. So this particular effort, the Safe Streets For All allows to create a network that addresses driver error to a certain extent. So the idea is to eliminate, like, you know, you all probably have heard the term vision zero. So it's like the idea to eliminate any severe injury or fatal injury accidents. So Arinda by ourselves don't score well generally, going after these grants due to certain requirements set by the grants. So teaming up with some of the other agencies within our county actually gives us a more higher blended score. So that's one of the reasons we teamed up through CCTA with that. And this is a national grant, so every individual agency, they don't prefer, every small agency applied by themselves, they would rather apply through a transportation authority and that's another reason we teamed up. But we do see a need for us, but definitely now that we have the grant award, we will kind of revisit the scope and see how we can best take advantage of it.
Okay. Okay. So moving on, item H6 is license plate reader cameras, review of city efforts and request from Knickerbocker Lane resident. And we're going to receive the report.
Yep, honourable mayor members of the council, I, I have a suggestion, which is, I know Mr. Dreyer's here tonight. I would maybe suggest, I don't want to give you a staff presentation in the interest of time. I know you'd like to try and get out of here, maybe take his public testimony under public comment. And then I would, this is not a time-sensitive item, so if you want to, if you think this might take more than five or 10 minutes, we can move it to another meeting as long as Mr. Dreyer, since he's waited here so patiently, has an opportunity to, to address you on this item. And then we can continue it to May 6th if you'd like.
That makes sense to me. Do we have agreement on that? Okay. Mr. Dreyer, thank you for waiting for so long. We have your written comment, but thank you for your patience.
Thank you, and I have a tremendous amount of respect for you guys staying here so late and doing this twice a month. It's really crystallized right now, so I'll, I'll give my comment now. Good evening, everyone. As, as introduced, my name is Evan Dreyer and it's my pleasure to submit my fourth public comment on public safety to this forum. First and foremost, thank you for including this proposal on today's agenda. Over the last 16 months, I've studied these LPR cameras, I've evaluated different providers, I've personally invested in their deployment in Knickerbocker, as many have in the neighborhood. And most importantly, I benefited from their placement personally. When my home was invaded by two masked men last January, it was a very challenging time for me and my family. And personally, having these cameras in our neighborhood has changed everything. It hasn't solved crime, that's not the purpose of them. But in terms of peace of mind at night and when there is a sketchy car that goes by, it just changes how, how well we sleep. It's incredibly exciting to see the potential for the entire Arinda community benefit from this state-of-the-art technology. I've been incredibly impressed with Flock, not only in their deployment, but in improving the platform, the technology over time. Their software and their interface has improved multiple times over the past year. And they're very, very well-funded, they've been great partners. And in my opinion, we'd be in the right hands for the long term with them. It's inspiring to consider that because of what you can do in terms of taking this vote, another family will not have to go through what my family did. This proposal represents a worthy investment of public safety resources. I'm mostly here tonight to state my full support for the staff's recommendation to add 15 more cameras. Furthermore, I appreciate all the staff's time in putting everything together. Not only does it show that you heard the community desire, but you came up with a plan to actually put it into action that calls for 15 more cameras. This means a lot, especially since both of you are new to your roles, so thank you both very much. That doesn't mean that we should always agree on absolutely everything and every element. And earlier today, I expressed some of my views on the staff's report with a focus on the cameras we deployed in Knickerbocker and why those aren't in scope. Simply put, I think they should be. I trust everyone's right where I submitted and I didn't come here tonight to reiterate all those points, although I'm happy to do so if you want to extend the meeting. Ultimately, we trust the city, we trust City Manager and Police Chief to make the right decisions for the community on the placement of these 15 cameras, not only initially, but over time as the technology evolves and as the threats change. Again, this is an issue where it's better to do a little too much than a little too issue because if we fail to, to meet the bar, it leads to people's homes being broken into. Overall, I would highlight kind of five points from my, from what I did send. Number one, the data supports the cam, adding these cameras, we presented that, please review it. We've seen, we've seen a great impact. Number two, the city previously stated last year that there would be a network expansion based on the staff's report. That simply didn't happen, that was at the Public Safety Subcommittee meeting as well as the April Public Safety Forum. So you have the opportunity to make that right. Actual placement of these cameras is complicated. We'd love to point and click at a map, that's not what happens. They need solar, it's hard to find placement. Our locations on Knickerbocker are secured, they've gone live, they've proven they work. Number four, crime doesn't affect all neighborhoods equally or proportionally. And I'll just finish quickly, two more points, so this isn't about favoritism, this is about getting the job done. And number five, there's strong public support for these LPR cameras. There's 15 private cameras that are already up, one just went into Arinda Woods last week. People are putting their money behind these cameras, this isn't something people are just complaining about, they're putting their dollars on. And that only shows support, but it also shows a perceived gap that we currently have in the network, which further supports expansion. So thank you very much for going over, for hearing this, for putting the proposal on. I urge you to move forward with the 15 cameras and please consider adding R2 as well, since they're fully funded through July of '26.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dreyer. Thanks for staying here and any questions for him while he's here?
No.
What is the ongoing funding after 2026?
It would be only $5,000. Interestingly, Flock quoted us less than what they're quoting the city, so that's a good point of price, price discovery for you. But usually the cameras, you know, are $2,500, but $3,000 based on what the city's suggesting.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So $2,500 each per, per year?
Per year.
Any other questions just while you're? Okay. Thank you so much. So do we have a motion to, do we need a motion to?
Continue the item?
To continue the item to our next meeting? No.
No, because this wasn't like newspaper notice.
Okay.
We'll just put it on the agenda again for May 6th.
Okay, so we'll be doing that.
And you'll vote on it then?
Yes, we'll have a more full discussion, vote on it then. It will be fresh. It will be fresh. Should, do we want to extend the meeting for council members' reports, city managers' reports and other items for another five minutes? Do we need to do that or no?
And the agenda, I mean, there's still items on the agenda that you have to get through.
There are, yeah. So let's motion to extend the meeting till 10:35? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that's unanimous. So that takes us to council member reports. Does anyone have a report they would like to quickly share? Okay, I will say two things. We had a MOFD in City Two by Two yesterday that Councilmember G and I attended. And there was some discussion about the high fire severity maps. And one of the takeaways is that those, I mean, I'm sorry, about Zone Zero and the maps. And one of the takeaways on the maps was that they are not being used by insurance and they're not, you know, what we all know. But also, there seems to be a lot of confusion and really no real understanding of what the methodology was. And then the second takeaway I got was on the Zone Zero, the regulations are being developed and they really won't be finalized until January. And succulents may be allowed, certain trees may be allowed. It's not clear which trees. It's kind of still very much in development. Anything, Councilmember G wants to add?
The only other thing I would add was MOFD did already decide to add more money into their home hardening materials grants. So they upped their budget to half a million dollars. So that's important to know because people are really taking advan, I know, our family did. We did all the gutters. So it was good to see that they've added more money.
And they rebudgeted for their two inspectors. And they're applying for grant money for the fire breaks. So it's all good news. And then we had a meeting with CalCities today that Councilmember G and I also attended, which was CalCities Working Group on Fire. And they went through a bunch of bills and I will communicate that information in writing to our city manager so it can be shared. Any other council member reports? Okay, then we will move to city managers' report.
The only thing I'll mention is that we have our Community Education Night on April 30th. And we have dropped postcards in the mail to every household in Arinda. So hopefully we will get a good turnout and help to talk about our shared responsibility in the event of an emergency.
Right. We also have Senator Grayson coming to Arinda on April 25th, just for an hour. He's going to Maraga and then he's coming to us. And we're going to show him Maraga Way, we're going to show him in Housing Element Site, Miramani, and we're going to show him downtown.
We have one hour.
In one hour.
In one hour.
And. And then, so moving on, any matters initiated? Do I have a motion and a second to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned to the next regular meeting on May 6th at 7:00 PM.